To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening. Welcome to a joint meeting with the Housing Authority on Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. I would like to invite Reverend Paul Clairville of Westminster Presbyterian Church in Burbank to lead us in the invocation this evening. Everyone, please stand and then remain standing for the salute afterward.
Let's pray. Almighty God, as we gather here in this chamber, prepare to do the business of the people. Let us never forget the privilege of standing and serving in this, as I like to refer to it, a mosh pit of democracy. Let us hold out hope that good will come and righteousness will reign. We give thanks for our city workers, our firefighters, our police, for our teachers of schools, our social workers and invaluable nonprofits, for our workers in business, and if I may, for our clergy and for our congregations. And finally, Lord, we give thanks to these people on this dais who guide this city by right of our vote. Be with and protect their families, and let their conscience be a reminder of whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, excellent, or praiseworthy. Let their minds be focused on that. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the flag salute. Begin.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of British standards, one nation under God, infinite and everlasting justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Clairville. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Present.
And Mayor Anthony?
Present.
Thank you.
We'd like to advise the community, there will be five periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general comment period and the public hearing comment period. Public comment for the reports to council will only be taken in person. If you'd like to participate over the phone, call now, 818-238-3335. We have three announcements this evening. There is a short video.
The following are announcements for April 4th, 2023. The following are announcements for April 4th, 2023. The City Council unanimously adopted a resolution in January to transition from an at-large election system to a by-district election system. This process will determine where neighborhoods and communities are grouped together for the purpose of electing members of the City Council. We are hosting public hearings, community forums, and providing two interactive mapping tools to gather people's visions for how district boundaries should be drawn. The second forum will be held on Thursday, April 6th, at 12:00 p.m. via Zoom, and the third forum will be held on Saturday, April 8th, at 10:30 a.m. in room 104 of the Community Services Building. Please visit www.burbankcouncildistricting.com for meeting details and other resources. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one scheduled vacancy on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority for a four-year term ending May 31st, 2027. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, May 3rd, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at www.burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email Burbank Bus has extended the hours and added more frequencies to the pink and orange fixed route bus schedules. Riders will have more continuous service during peak hours, mornings, and evenings. To view the new bus schedules, please visit www.burbankbus.org or call 818-246-4258. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
We have three council presentations on the agenda this evening. First is the presentation of a proclamation declaring April 4th, 2023 as Warner Brothers' Day in the City of Burbank. And before I invite today's guest to accept this proclamation, we'd like to play a video celebrating Warner Brothers' 100th birthday. Let's see that video.
There is no place like home. There is no place like home. This is so amazing.
Here's Lucky and Ewken.
At Warner Brothers, we are storytellers.
Easy, miss. I've got you.
You've got me. Who's got you?
It's built into the very foundation of who we are.
What is it?
The stuff that dreams are made of.
One studio.
Yeah, baby.
And countless stories.
It is our destiny.
That have inspired a century.
And here we go.
The stories we tell have allowed us to fall in love.
Wherever you are in the world, that's where I belong.
They've given us comfort. They've given us strength.
There are 5 billion people on this planet, and you're the perfect mom for me. What are the odds of that?
Together, we've found laughter is the best medicine.
What is Chandler Bing's job?
Oh, 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 he's a Trump monster! That's not even a word!
Epic journeys will always be afoot.
I'm going on an adventure!
The tears battles will always be waged.
This is Sparta!
And true heroes always stand united in the face of adversity.
Can I be like you someday?
You can be anything you want to be.
Every story.
Here's Johnny!
No matter its size.
Release the kraken!
Is worthy of being told.
Damn, I almost just get goosebumps.
Are you ready?
I'm ready. Ready to fly.
This is only the beginning.
100 years and countless more ahead. Join us in celebrating every story.
I want to welcome Mr. Michael Walbrecht, Vice President of Public Affairs for Warner Brothers Discovery, to join me at the podium. Welcome, Mr. Walbrecht. Thank you. Come over here. Stand over here. I'm going to hand you this thing. All right. Wonderful video. Okay. Here, let me read this for you real quick. Okay. All right. There's a lot here. You guys done them. 100 years, it adds up. All right. Yeah. Whereas Warner Brothers Studios began when Albert, Sam, Harry, and Jack L. Warner incorporated their fledgling movie company on April 4th, 1923. And whereas pioneers in their own right, the Warners brought sound to movies, introduced the first four-legged star, revitalized the movie musical, created the gangster picture era, and produced a number of socially significant films that evoke national awareness about growing problems of their times. And in 1927, the release of the world's first talky synchronized sound feature film, The Jazz Singer, set a character and tone of innovation and influence that would become synonymous with the name Warner Brothers. And as Al Jolson foretold in this milestone movie, "You ain't heard nothing yet." I'll skip to the end here. Throughout the first 100 years, Warner Brothers has been home of bold, impactful storytelling, always with the goal to entertain, inform, and inspire. As they celebrate their centennial through 2023, they are proud to continue the tradition of their founders' mission, celebrating every story. Now therefore I, Constantine Anthony, Mayor of the City of Burbank, recognize and honor Warner Brothers Studios on their 100th anniversary by designating Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, as Warner Brothers Day in the City of Burbank. Do you have a few words?
I don't need the mic, but I'll say, we look forward to another 100 years in Burbank. We're very fortunate to be here. Thank you. Nice to see you all.
All right. Next is a presentation of proclamation declaring April 9th through the 15th, 2023, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Burbank. I want to welcome Burbank Police Captain J.J. Puglisi and Mrs. Cheryl Mendez, Communications Manager, to join me up here. Oh, you know what? This one, there's enough here. I can read this all. All right. Whereas in 1991, Congress enacted a formal proclamation signed by President Clinton designating the second full week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our community members have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Burbank Police Department are an essential part of the city's public safety system and perform their job duties exhibiting compassion, professionalism, and dedication. Now therefore I, Constantine Anthony, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim this week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Burbank. The Council and the City of Burbank honors the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. So thank you. Here, hold that for me. You can give him a round of applause again.
And I want to ask that we could bring up the dispatchers as well.
Oh, yes, please, yes. Absolutely.
So I'll just play a little bit off of the Warner Brothers scenes up here. And we had the opportunity to see some fictional superheroes up there. And just like Batman would be nothing without Alfred, the police officers that serve your community would be nothing without the dispatchers that are behind the scenes supporting everything we do. So we thank them. We're grateful for all that they do. And I will pass the mic off to Cheryl to introduce the rest of the crew that we have here.
Thank you. I won't be as eloquent as the captain. However, I just wanted to say, if I may say one thing, that for many people, calling 911, calling the police services, it's the first and the only contact they ever have with the police department. And I am so proud of the first impression that these people make day in and day out. They give their best. They make me proud, and they make me want to be here for another 100 years like Warner Brothers. So let me introduce you, Sarah Manukian, Megan Olson, Supervisor Brenda Perez-Arosco, Ariela Taramian, I'm so sorry, and Brianna Beridge, and the chief.
The final council presentation this evening, a proclamation declaring April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and April 26th, 2023 as Denim Day in the City of Burbank. I would like to welcome Burbank resident and Zonta Club District 9 Lieutenant Governor Gloria Solis to accept the proclamation. Let's give her a round of applause for coming up. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Denim Day has been declared on April 26th, 2023 in LA County. And both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence remains a serious issue in our society. Sexual harassment is part of a continuum of violence whose damaging effects are felt throughout our culture. Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about sexual violence and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of sexual harassment, assault, abuse, and rape. And every two minutes, someone in America is sexually assaulted. Approximately 1 in 5 women are raped during their lifetime, and youth under 18 account for about 44% of all reported. At least 25% of women experience sexual assault in the workplace, and about 75% of harassment victims experience retaliation when they reported it. Whereas the City of Burbank strongly supports the efforts of the Zonta Club of Burbank and Family Service Agency to educate persons in our community about the true impact of sexual harassment, abuse, assault, and rape in Southern California. Now therefore I, Constantine Anthony, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and designate April 26th as Denim Day and urge everyone to wear jeans on this day to help communicate the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to harass, abuse, assault, or rape. Thank you for coming up.
First of all, most of that was my speech, so. But I would like to invite Councilmembers Nikki Perez and Tamala Takahashi, as members at the Zonta Club of Burbank area, to join us because they too, along with Katie Picha and Chris Ramos, even though Chris is with Family Service Agency, she also does the work that Zonta does. We advocate for women. We fight against violence towards women. We campaign against human trafficking, domestic violence. And Chris and Lori Blake, who's the executive director of Family Service Agency, are at the forefront. And as was said in the proclamation, it happens on a daily basis. And I just wanted to add one thing, that according to RAIN, which is the Rape Abuse and Incest National Network, every 68 seconds, somewhere in America is being sexually assaulted. And every nine minutes is a child who is being sexually assaulted. So I, it was wonderful to hear about Warner Brothers celebrating its 100th birthday because that's something that brings joy and hope and life into our lives. And then you have the 911 responders, and they, as was said, are the first people that have the contact with the police. So kudos to the dispatchers and all the work that they do to help victims of sexual violence and any other form of violence, to have someone to come to their aid, to their assistance, and to also give them the information where they can find further emotional support. And for that, I will pass this on to Chris Ramos.
Thank you. We just wanted to share with the community that this month, for the month of April, we'll be having drop-in support groups on Thursday, or Tuesday evening, sorry, at 6 o'clock, starting next week, for survivors of sexual assault. So you can just stop by the agency. Our phone number, if you'd like to call for more information, is 818-845-7671. And then on Denim Day, we have an art display outside the building. You're welcome to come and drive by. Some art pieces, denim jeans typically are decorated by victims or survivors of sexual assault, and it's used as a community awareness piece. So we'd love to have you stop by.
Thank you all. One more round of applause. And let's get a photo. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. City Manager Justin Hess, do you have anything to report?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I do. I do have one item. I'd like to invite up our police chief, Mike Albanese, to provide an update on a matter that we have been dealing with. Chief?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers, good evening. The purpose of this report out is to have a discussion about TikTok videos that have been recently posted and have been posted for a period of time. The optics of the videos are problematic. I will remind folks that this is a social media platform, so there are liberties that can be taken with this social media platform. Having said that, it involves a couple, married couple, that lives in the City of Burbank. The optics become more problematic because the male is a former Burbank police officer that was terminated and was sentenced to federal prison. In addition to that, the woman is also, is conversant with the criminal justice system, and I'll just leave it at that. So please understand that the seriousness as it relates to domestic violence is complicated, and there is a cycle of violence, and we have folks that yo-yo in and out of that cycle of violence. They become dependent, then they want to separate, and typically, they reach out to us. So allegations will go back and forth, and in this case, the allegations are bountiful. And the TikTok videos typically will be one-sided. One-sided in the sense that they will be videos of film that were taken by one of the individuals, and there'll be commentary. And then there's a number of these videos, and I'm going to call them the little video vignettes, and there'll be commentary, and the opportunity to respond to that is problematic again. So the department did provide a statement because the, a couple of the recent videos really inflamed a lot of folks because there was an appearance that we did nothing. There was an appearance that we were inept, we, the police department. And that simply was not the case because they're not getting the full story. There's a third-party social media influencer who also opines on what we have done or what we haven't done. But again, it's a one-way conversation. The statement we made was pretty generic because we did not want to be defensive, insensitive to the plight of victims of domestic violence, and also inept. So let me share with you the processes that we have in place as we navigate and manage this couple. I put them in the high-utilizer category. There are other behavioral underpinnings that exacerbate their life circumstances. Enough said on that. So anytime there's a call for service, not only do you have officers respond, there will be a supervisor to provide supervisory oversight to make sure that we manage the incident properly. There's a notification to the watch commander to doubly ensure that we are managing it properly. And in certain instances, there's notification to the command staff, that means captains and myself, as recently as this weekend, to make sure that we are managing the incident because of the history of both of them. And this has been going on for a handful of years. With social media, again, it just complicates a very complicated relationship. In addition to that, I have a detective that's assigned to them. That detective is responsible for any case associated with them, any allegation, any dispute, any question, they reach out to that detective. He receives phone calls from them. He receives emails from them, talking about concierge service as far as life services that's done daily. I spoke to him again today, and both of them already reached out to him. In addition to that, the City Attorney's Office has two prosecutors that will pay special attention to any allegation, the primary prosecutor and the supervising prosecutor. So there's multiple eyes and collaboration as far as managing their circumstances. So the collaboration is essential moving forward. I'll just remind folks is that we are the finder of facts. That's what we do as far as our investigation. And we put the facts together. We present them to a prosecutor to make sure, and let them determine if they're going to move forward with that. The one thing that I did not share with you, and it's the obvious, so forgive me, is that in every instance, we offer services. So services, resources for them to help with their relationship or make a decision of what they're going to do with their relationship. Not only do we do it, but we're mandated by law. So every instance that we're out there, there is a forms that they get from the City of Burbank and also from the state of California. We have solicited their cooperation as far as seeking resources to help them through their relationship, and it's been rejected. In fact, it's actually been mocked. So there's a couple of components here, and I know I've gone a long ways here, but I think it's important because, one, the seriousness of the allegations between them. But we also have folks that will opine as far as support and also disdain because some of these social media postings will claim allegations and portray a situation or a plight of being victim with an attachment to a GoFundMe account. That infuriates folks that may have more knowledge of the individuals and the backstory. So as the police department, and I know that you have received emails as far as what are you doing, why isn't the police department doing anything? And that's created more work for you. I've just shared with you the workload that we have associated with these folks. But we have to navigate this process with professionalism. We have to preserve the integrity of an ongoing investigation that's ongoing, have to preserve the dignity of the involved folks regardless of what their life circumstances are because if they're a victim, they're a victim. So that is an organizational priority. So we'll take the hits as an organization as far as folks not believing that we're doing stuff, but I'm here to tell you in the community that there is a lot that we're doing. We're attentive to their circumstances and sensitive to the plight of any victim, especially as it relates to domestic violence. plight of any victim, especially as it relates to domestic violence. I think that covers it.
Thank you, Chief. Because this is an ongoing investigation, I don't want to open this up to any questions from council, but I will say this to the people at home watching. If you're upset with policy or the way the department is run, council sets policy, please email council. You can contact us. Calling the police department to change the way they do business is a dead end, it just wastes resources. We are the ones who are responsible. So please contact the city council. You can email us directly, citycouncil@burbankca.gov. Any final words?
Yeah, a couple. There's, as far as resources, folks will sometimes, well, what are the resources? So not only are there resources that we provide to any victims, and they're local resources, there's aid agencies that are available, six of the eight have a 24-hour service, five of the six also are bilingual. One of the agencies that is not a 24/7 operation is Family Services Agency. And I'm associated with them, and I actually talked to the director of Family Services as far as, you know, complicated relationships and how we navigate that. So that is a resource, and other resources that have a willingness to intervene if there was a cooperative spirit. The other thing is that the city has a domestic violence task force. So it's comprised of some really notable folks, not only elected, city attorney, community, community members that have a interest in, in domestic violence and the path to providing resources to victims. So, and that meeting is tomorrow, tomorrow evening, and I believe that that is a public meeting that they can listen to.
That's right. 5:30, 5:30 PM tomorrow evening, at the, right across the street, 150 North Third Street, room 104. I'll be there tomorrow. I invite the public to come. Anyone who is dealing with domestic violence of any type, please come and find some resources. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. And I want to apologize, I have to leave. So Captain Cremmons and Police Administrator Courtney Paget will address the other issues that we have going on tonight. So thank you all, and thank you for your patience in allowing me to go a long time on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next is a presentation of an update from Southern California Gas Company. Mrs. Marisol Espinoza, Public Affairs Manager for SoCalGas, welcome. Thank you for joining us and providing the community with this information.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Anthony, members of the city council, and city staff. My name is Marisol Espinoza, I'm the Public Affairs Manager for SoCalGas, and I'm here to just provide an update. I know what's been really top of mind for a lot of customers, and for your city, and for a lot of your constituents have been high gas bills that have come in the last few months. And so I wanted to just give some information as to what happened, you know, what, some programs that are available for assistance to customers, and really just here to share an update. So, as you've seen, the price of natural gas was historically high in January, and it has continued, has gone down over the last few months, so I just wanted to give that update. As of March, the price had gone down approximately 80%, and then the, for April, it's gone down even further. So just a little bit of additional background on, SoCalGas does not set the price for natural gas. This is determined by national and regional markets. We buy natural gas in those markets on behalf of our residential and small business customers, and the cost of buying that gas is billed with no markup, meaning SoCalGas does not profit from the movement of gas commodity prices. Some of the causes for increases is, according to experts at the U.S. Energy Information Administration, there was a combination of out-of-state natural gas supply constraints, combined with early persistent cold weather conditions across the West, the low storage inventories in the Western region, and that was what drove up the commodity price. Also, the California Public Utilities Commission held an am-bank hearing recently where several experts testified regarding those conditions that led to the high prices, and that was out-of-state pipeline maintenance in West Texas, low storage inventories outside of SoCalGas's territory. And the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, has announced that it intends to open a proceeding to examine high winter prices, and that would be the proper venue for this issue. It's just some programs and services that we have available that I wanted to briefly talk about. The CPUC recently approved the acceleration of the California Climate Credit. So many of you might have seen a credit on your gas bill for February or March, that would have been approximately $50.77, and I know that customers have been reporting that they have been getting that credit. And we also have delayed collection activities on any overdue accounts, and we are not disconnecting any rose, any overdue residential customers until further notice. We also have paused all non-residential collection field activities effective February 1st. We are also continuing to inform our customers about several ways to help income-qualified customers through bill and home improvement assistance programs, bill forgiveness programs, and the Level Pay Plan. Just some other programs that we have available, the Care Program is our 20% discount for income-eligible customers, our ESAP is our Energy Savings Assistance Program, which provides free energy home improvements for income-qualified customers, and our Medical Baseline Program, which helps eligible customers with medical conditions. Additionally, some good news is that we recently announced a $10 million donation in shareholder funding to provide additional relief to low-income families, seniors, and small restaurant owners that are impacted by the unprecedented regional natural gas market prices. Of the $10 million, $5 million is going to go into the Gas Assistance Fund, which is a program administered by the United Way to provide one-time grants to income-qualified customers to help pay their natural gas bills. This contribution will help the Gas Assistance Fund reach more customers with larger grants. So initially, you could receive a grant of up to $100 to help with your gas bill. Now that number has increased to $400 for customers that would qualify. So, and that's in addition to the $1 million contribution SoCalGas made to the Gas Assistance Fund in January. We're going to be donating $4 million to Relaunch Fueling Our Communities, which is a collaborative program with local food banks and nonprofit organizations to provide free meals and groceries to thousands of Californians facing food insecurity. The Fueling Our Communities program is a program that we actually started in 2020 during the pandemic. We partnered with restaurants and food banks to try to support the community and local business, and so we, it was a very successful program across several counties throughout our service territory. And so we're going to be announcing the Fueling Our Communities grants very soon. We'll definitely keep you informed on which organizations are going to be participating in that program. Additionally, $1 million is going to go into the Restaurants Care Resilience Fund to help small restaurants with improvements, upgrades, employee retention, and to manage debt losses and rising costs. And so that grant program is actually going to be opening up April 15th, and any restaurant can apply for a grant to help with any of these, any of these needs that they might have. And any of the, and all of this can be found at socalgas.com/newsroom, and for assistance programs, that's socalgas.com/assistance. Again, absolutely understand the shock that people felt. It's been a really difficult and challenging time across the board, you know, everything, the cost of so many things have been going up, and so we just want to see how we can continue to help our customers, and we know that you've been hearing from, from folks, and however we can be of assistance, please feel free to let me know. I have my contact information. You can contact me anytime with questions or anything you might need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Espinoza. I appreciate you coming down here. Before we move on to general public comment, I want to point out Agenda Item 4 has been pulled from tonight's agenda. It will be considered at the April 25 council meeting. The time for general public comment is now, and you can fill out a yellow public comment card and give it to the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a whole thing. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report out on closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and for the benefit of members of the community, the city council met in closed session earlier this evening to discuss two items in closed session. The first item was a matter of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The case is additional national TIVA, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart opioid settlements. The case is MDL number 2804 opioid, opiate litigation. And in this matter, city council gave unanimous direction for staff to participate in the new settlement agreements with the pharmacies and manufacturers, and authorize the city manager to enter into settlement agreements so the city can participate in those funds. The second item of closed session discussion was meeting with the city's labor negotiator, Ms. Betsy McClinton, Management Services Director, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, concerning the Burbank Firefighter Chief Officers Unit International Association of Firefighters Local 778. City Council took no reportable action in that item.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. For those wishing to call in for public comment, the number is 818-238-3335. First, I have Ron Backs, followed by Hrare Rostaman. Hello, Mr. Backs.
Good evening. I had a cousin come down, stay overnight. They should be at the master's about now. He and his friend left early this morning, and I thought in the time before I had to take him to the airport, I would print out the stuff for tonight. And what I did is I printed out the wrong stuff, stuff for next week, which is present, present owner's day-to-day finances operation. I decided to give that to you so you could look at it the next week or so. I think you'll be, I think you'll be surprised by the information. So we have acquisition through inheritance here. Because my last parent passed away about five years ago, I went through the process of acquiring their properties. It's not as easy as one would think, and it's not as economically feasible as one would think either, or a windfall for the inherit, for the heir. Okay. As I shown, as shown in the previous meeting, small investors, mom and pops, are unlikely to enter the providing housing, and this analysis shows generational continuation of providing housing is unlikely also. As mentioned in the bullets sections above, if my parents' estate was to settle today, the negative cash, cash flow on the real estate properties would be about $3,000 to $5,000 a month. Hence, four single-family residents would be removed from the rental housing market because I couldn't sustain that. Next meeting will show the headwinds, which is the paper I gave you, I prepared this before that. Next meeting, we will show the headwinds current housing providers are facing may result in them leaving the housing market provision, provision. This means professional organizations are most likely to step in. Rent control increases the odds of them continuing, dominating the industry, becoming the future reality, because small housing providers lack the resources to navigate and weather the forever increasing intricacies providing rental housing, especially if you're in the city of LA. I do not want to be in the city of LA. I consider myself a small, but I'm a much larger than most mom and pop housing providers. I think I have demonstrated I can, I could not start and will not be able to carry on my parents' rental properties in today's housing market. My parents, I thought, my parents and I thought generational wealth through passing down real estate as a blessing. My experience made this questionable in 2018. My increased income closely matched, as I told you last time, the return on investment currently is about 0.17%. That didn't take into account all the financial, legal process I had to go through to protect it for my children. Okay? Due to the acquisition of my parents' properties, if transfer occurred now rather than 2018, it would be a curse. I now wonder if all the effort my wife and I have expended in the same vision will result in the real estate holding being a curse to our children rather than a blessing. If we determine that is the case, my wife and I will take steps to prevent this. And moving ahead from next week, what I'd have to say is if somebody comes and tells you that housing providers are doing just fine, I suggest you're a comment, the response is, okay, I'm listening, show me the beef. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Backs. I have Hrare Rostamian, followed by Dale Gorman.
Good evening. My name is Hrare Rostamian, and I'm here to remind everyone that April is the National Autism Spectrum Awareness Month. According to the latest CDC report two weeks ago, one in 36 children are diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. To Be Happy is a nonprofit organization dedicated to opening new horizons in the lives of individuals with all abilities, including but not limited to those in the spectrum. The Telethon is one of our projects, and I am the director of the Second Annual Telethon. The Telethon is to bring awareness, education, information, panel discussions to the community at large, and provide a platform for related businesses to present their work. We are happy to announce that Horizon TV, one of our, is one of our main sponsors, and they have dedicated their entire facility and operation to this Telethon on April 16th. Glendale is home to our organization, and Burbank is right next door, and we would love to have city council members to be present on April 16th, but we know not everyone will be able to do so. Therefore, we provide each council member a package to support us by in-person, recorded message, or a written message. And if you have any questions, I have with me Nanor Shahin, MA and BCBA of our organization. If you have any questions, we would love to have you in our program. And this is for all the communities, not just Glendale. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have Dale Gorman, followed by Andre Dinesian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and city council members and department heads. I'm Dale Gorman, Executive Director of the Kids Community Dental Clinic in Burbank, and I wanted to thank the city for the opportunity to apply, to apply for funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program. This year, we respectfully declined to apply. As we were anticipating, we are anticipating to expand the clinic. As I've talked to several of you, we're, we're really trying hard to explain, expand our operations to serve more families. We are a provider of dentistry for low-income families, and we've been operating for over 20 years. And we have planned to use this year to really focus on the expansion, and we upped our grant applications last year and are fully funded for the fiscal year that the, the city block grant covers. Therefore, we are not going to apply at this time, but hopefully, we'll have a, a building soon, and we'll apply for the capital portion of the community block grant program. We're, we're working hard looking for properties. It's very difficult. Inventory is low, and parking requirements are high, and it's really a big challenge for us. But we are sure we're going to find something soon, and we'll update you at that time. But I wanted to thank the city for the opportunity to apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. I have Andre Dinesian, followed by Jose Pimienta.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and community members. I'm Andre Dinesian, and tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Burbank Armenian Association to introduce the organization to our community. We're a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit that is firmly dedicated to serving our community. Our mission is rooted in promoting unity, diversity, and cultural education within our community. It is our ardent belief that cultural understanding and diversity are the cornerstones of a robust and vibrant community. Therefore, we take pride in being a nonpartisan, nonpolitical organization. Under the leadership of Romi Kokopian and Lucina Simonian, we established the Burbank Armenian Association. Armenian Association in October of two thousand twenty-two during the tumultuous war in Artsakh. One of our proudest accomplishments is bringing the first Armenian-themed mural to the city of Burbank. This stunning mural is located at the Nexus Auto Group and represents the rich, the rich cultural history of Armenian heritage. We are delighted to have been able to share this beautiful mural with our community. We are also proud to offer support and cultural education opportunities to Armenian-American businesses and community members in the city of Burbank. Our organization is committed to providing advocacy and networking opportunities to promote inclusivity and unity within our community. We are steadfast partners with our friends at A N C A Burbank on initiatives that seek to empower the Armenian community. Together, we aim to make a tangible difference in the city. Currently, we are collaborating with the Burbank Police Department to address the rampant issue of reckless driving in the city. Through this, though this is not a cultural issue, we are confident that our community can make substantial impact by working in partnership with local law enforcement to promote safety and responsible driving. Finally, we are proud to have a diverse board of directors comprised of both Armenian and non-Armenian community leaders. This diversity is pivotal to promoting understanding and unity within our community. We are thrilled to invite the Burbank community to our inaugural event, Building Success Through Resilience, on Saturday, April fifteenth, from one to four P. M. at the Nexus Auto Group. We hope this event will be the first step in inspiring our community and bringing people together. We would be it would be an honor to have you all attend. There's flyers going around with the information. We are committed to working hand in hand with the city council and our fellow community members to build a strong and more vibrant Burbank. Thank you for your time and for your continued support.
Thank you, Andre. I have Jose Pimienta, followed by Christine Ramos. That's my last card.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask for just a second because it takes me a little bit to get used to being on the podium. Yeah, so once again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Last time that I was here, I brought to your attention the the need for tenant protections because fifty-seven percent of Burbank residents are tenants, and they don't seem to have the same legal protections as as homeowners. Today, tonight, I want to bring up to your attention the possibility of having a rental board where it would be a requirement that members of that board would also be renters because that would also provide a more fair vantage perspective for whenever there is an issue, whether it's between landlords and or tenants. Right now, we have the the Tenant-Landlord Commission, which they do a wonderful job mitigating issues between tenants and landlords. However, they operate under what is legally permissible, meaning what is legally allowed right now. And if there were to be more, you know, more protections given to tenants, having a renter board that would also, you know, that would also provide the possibility where different perspectives come in, and those issues would actually have a more wider vantage point and a wider perspective. And that way, the quality of life in the residents would also increase, and it would be better for everyone. So with the time that I have, just want to say thank you for your time and enjoy your evening.
Thank you, Ms. Pimienta. I have Christine Ramos. That's my last card.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city staff, and of course, the Burbank community. My name is Christine Ramos. I'm the Director of Operations at Family Service Agency at Burbank, and I just wanted to share for those in the community who may not know that F S A has been providing domestic violence services for thirty years, and we do have twenty-four-hour service for victims of domestic violence, so you can just call if you need any assistance. And we do have other free services as well, counseling and support groups and things like that. So just want to make sure everyone was aware. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Are there any callers on the line for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, send them on through.
The first caller is Ben Sheffield.
Hi, good evening. I am addressing this question to the city attorney, Mr. McDougall. Since Mr. Schultz and Mr. Anthony announced their campaigns that if one would result in their vacating their current seats on the Burbank City Council, there is confusion by voters as to the process. The basic question is this: Then winning their elections, is there a time when the individuals forfeit their current seats on the council? The confusion focuses on the following: If the two individuals enter the primary and lose, will they still retain their current seats on the council? If the two individuals make it to the general election and lose, do they forfeit their current seats on the council and cannot return? Please explain the process, Mr. McDougall. Thank you very much.
We have one more caller at this time.
The next caller is Jason Rojas.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jason. I'm I'm calling behalf of wanting to try to get more seating for bus stops. I've seen several across Burbank where there aren't any bus benches or seating at the bus stop, and I've seen a lot of like senior citizens, older people that tend to use these bus stops. And I just feel like it's unfair that they're always standing. And yeah, I feel like they really appreciate it, and our community would appreciate it. I actually have two neighbors that constantly use public transportation, and there's a bus stop near me that doesn't have any seating, and it's always older, older people. So yeah, this is something I see every single day, and I feel like it would really help them out and benefit us. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is that our last caller? We've got one more.
That was our last caller.
Okay, great. There being no more public comment, I will close the public comment period. Brief response from council, but possibly if we can go in reverse order, Mr. City Manager, there was a question about bus stops. We have two. We have the Burbank bus lines, but we also have Metro. Can we explain what's going on?
Yeah, for ours, you know, we do have a policy related to bus benches, but the good news is that our our bus bench contract that that is coming towards end and will be renewing that, and I think there's an opportunity there to really have some exciting changes that would really end up resulting in in different shelf bus shelters and different bus benches and things like that. So that's going to come back to you. I think it expires this year, and we'll be bringing that back to you at the start of next year.
And that's just for the Burbank bus. We don't have any control over what Metro does on their bus lines.
It's that's under Metro's authority.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, there was a question to you.
I have a brief response to Mr. Sheffield's question. Charter, City Charter, section three zero five, the last sentence provides, "Members of the city council shall not hold any other elective public office to which compensation is attached, and the acceptance of any such office or employment shall be deemed a resignation as council member." So not until such time as a council member is successfully elected to an additional office would they need to resign from their position. A council member, of course, wouldn't be running for two separate offices on the same ticket, so the matter would sort itself out. You know, basically, you would no longer be a council member at such time as you were successful in running for a different office.
All right, thank you. Council, any response to callers?
No, just want to thank everyone also for the autism event. That's wonderful work, and I appreciate that. You're bringing awareness to everyone and to F S A for doing a great job with domestic violence and a lot of other work that they do in the community. And bus stop was handled, a couple of the other questions were handled. And Andrea, regarding the upcoming event, I've seen the flyer, and I congratulate the organization for doing such a great job and doing an outreach. I can tell you, unfortunately, I cannot make it. I have grandma duty, my granddaughter's second birthday, so it really, I was looking forward to attend, but I wouldn't be able to be there. Thank you.
Same here. Thank you to everybody that called and that spoke today at public comment. I'm really excited about the upcoming nonprofit events that we have in our community, and I'm really proud of the work that a lot of our nonprofits are doing to address a lot of the needs in the community. And happy birthday, Warner Brothers.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight and shared information and your and your thoughts. And I'd like to echo the sentiment of we had several nonprofits and community groups present tonight and share with us the wonderful work that they're doing in the community. So for those of you who are still here, thank you so much for for sharing that with us. We try to go to as many events as we possibly can, so I'm I'm confident that we'll have some representation from our council at your events. And keep doing the great work, keep letting us know what you're doing, and very much appreciate it. And for the folks who called about other other items, they will be coming up before us. Keep an eye on the agenda forecast. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you to everyone who came in tonight and those who called in. I won't repeat anything that my colleagues have said, but to the commenters who have been, and I imagine will continue to come to address the council regarding rent control or a rental board, please know that we can't comment on it because that is a future agenda item, but really appreciate your input, and I'll look forward to continuing to listen to everything you have to say for future meetings. So thank you very much for coming to spend an evening with us.
Yeah, thank you all for coming down. As always, Dale Gorman, pleasure seeing you. And Mr. Dinesian, could you please let the Burbank Armenian Association know that the council, the city of Burbank, is outraged and disgusted by the recent anti-Armenian flyers that were distributed next door in the city of Glendale? We are keeping an eye on that, and our folks have been alerted to that possibility. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have seven items on the consent calendar. The first item is approval of the Housing Authority minutes of the joint meeting of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The second item is approval of the Downtown Burbank Property-Based Business Improvement District Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-three annual report. Item three is approval to accept one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and twenty-three cents from the Board of State and Community Corrections Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant Program, and to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget by appropriating funds. Item four was pulled and will be brought back at a later date. Item five is adoption of a resolution approving a project list for the Road Repair and Accountability Act, Senate Bill One, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Item six is adoption of a resolution approving contract documents and awarding a construction contract to M C E C Incorporated for the Larry A. Maxim Building Renovation on Pacific Avenue. Item seven is annual review of planned developments and development agreements. And item eight is adoption of a resolution for the Section Eight program, Burbank Public Housing. Oh, I'm sorry. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. Noting the removal of item number four, is there a motion to approve consent? Oh, yes, sir. Let's take a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question. I don't want to poll anything, but could I get some clarification on item number three from a representation from our V P D about the one hundred and four about one hundred and four thousand dollars for our wellness and mental health grant? And could you give us a little bit more information on what that's used for in P D?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for your question. I'd be happy to provide what we believe we're going to do with this funding. We just received it. We have until December first of two thousand twenty-five to expend it, but we've got a lot of irons in our fires, so I don't think we're going to have any problems. One of our first initiatives is going to be to continue bi-annual training for our peer support team. Last year, we implemented a designated peer support team. It's sixteen individuals in the department, sworn and non-sworn, that were nominated by their peers, that cover a wide range of roles and responsibilities. Rank within the department includes a member of our chaplain program. So they attended two sessions last year with a licensed police psychologist to learn about what a peer support team does and what their roles and responsibilities are, as well the fundamentals of what they need to act in the role of a peer support member. So what we'd like to do is to continue to train that group to sustain what their capabilities are and to build on those so that they maintain a state of readiness to meet the needs of our staff at any time. So right now, we're planning to do bi-annual continual training with that group. We'd also like that group to continue their participation in the L.A. County Regional Peer Support Group trainings. That group has been meeting on a quarterly basis or as needed, where all of the law enforcement agencies that have peer support teams get together for a one-day session. Usually, a training component, and then they'll do kind of debriefs on critical incident responses that each agency has participated in, what worked, what didn't, what initiatives or departments utilizing. So we'd like to continue our participation in that group. We also are going to implement quarterly roll call trainings, so this will be available to all of our staff, where we will bring in subject matter experts to speak at our roll call briefings, and that will include sworn, non-sworn. The people actually have to come out seven different times, said weekends and midnight and everything else to hit all of our staff, but we'll have them come out and talk about substance abuse, financial wellness, maintaining your family wellness while you're working in law enforcement, stress management, and just really cover those all of those topics. And our goal there is to, you know, make sure this is not just a one-time conversation, that wellness, mental health are part of our organization, and this is a conversation that we have as just part of our doing business, and it's okay to have those conversations. So we'd like to continue that moving into the next year. We're also going to have participation in national conferences that are focused on law enforcement, mental health, and wellness, and we have three right now that are going for the remainder of this year that we will send our staff to participate in. We're looking at basically anything and everything else that's out there, web-based applications, videos, books, resource materials. We want to make sure that we have a holistic approach to providing the resources needed for staff who may be experiencing various types of difficulties. And then we're also looking at wellness events, which is something we haven't done before. So we aren't sure exactly what that looks like at this time, but we are looking at partnering with local service providers, maybe fitness organizations, nutrition, you know, restaurants or organizations, to maybe do something that brings staff together outside of their normal, you know, work environment, so they can bring their families, kind of engage in a more informal environment, not only to get the resources that are there, but to continue to build on the teamwork and camaraderie that we're trying to establish. So that's a lot. We continue to we hope to continue to do even more. And I want to think it's worth pointing out that on the May seventeenth Police Commission meeting, wellness is on the agenda. We have our police psychologists will be actually doing a presentation to the Police Commission on some of the initiatives that we've been doing and hope to continue. So I encourage council and members of the community to participate in that meeting if you're interested in learning more. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, appreciate it. Any motion?
Not a motion, but if I may, just also a quick update on the item number two for the expansion of the downtown, just to show what it means and how we can get additional revenues from an expansion.
Someone to talk about item number two? If you could be brief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. Nice to see you again. I promise I won't faint. I do have one slide that I wanted to share, and I promise I'll be brief. This gives me a good opportunity just to kind of reiterate kind of what the Downtown Burbank Business Improvement District does. So this is the map of the Downtown Burbank P bid currently right now. We have three zones. The zone in the orange-yellow color is Zone One, the middle area in the blue is Zone Two, and the green area to the right of the screen is Zone Three. Zone Three was recently added in two thousand eighteen after the the district was together for fifteen years. Two thousand twenty-three actually marks the twentieth year and twentieth anniversary of our Downtown Burbank P bid, and that organization has invested private funding into into the downtown area approximately sixteen million dollars. So just a quick overview, back in two thousand eighteen, when we did renew the district for a ten-year term, we expanded that zone into Zone Three. We thought it was important because IKEA was there now, Hilton Garden Inn, Spring Hill Suites, as well as Tesla. The new budget definitely did increase. The original budget was around seven hundred thousand dollars. We were able to go up to a little bit over a million dollars, and that's when we added our hard And that's when we added our hospitality and social service outreach program like Street Plus. We increased our maintenance, added more holiday decorations and things of that nature. So those are the types of things that the P-Bid has done to invest back into the downtown. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. I really congratulate Economic Development for doing such a great job and I wanted everyone in the community to hear what was this item about, so I do appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, motions?
I can make a motion now if you'd like to. I make a motion that we move the consent calendar as stated with excluding or removing item number four. Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mullins, seconded by Perez. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the time and place for the public hearing of the Burbank Housing Authority to consider the Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for Fiscal Year 2023-2024 and proposed amendments to the Housing Authority Administrative Plan. Before we begin, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing?
No.
Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, we do.
And has the city received any written communications on this matter? And have they been provided to all city council members?
They have. Thank you.
Will the representative of the Burbank Housing Authority please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Odette Ivasian, Housing Specialist, and I'm before you this evening to present to you the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Annual Plan and the required documents for the administration of the Section Eight Program. The purpose of this presentation is to give an update on the activities of the Burbank Housing Authority to continue to receive funding for the Section Eight Rental Assistance Program. I'll provide more details later in the presentation. In summary, the goal of the program is to assist the most needy and vulnerable households in the city who, if not for this rent subsidy, would be at risk of becoming homeless. Program participants utilize the Section Eight Rent Subsidy to lease a unit in the private market and pay only a portion of the contract rent with their household income, making the unit affordable to the participant household. The Section Eight Program meets the City Council goal of providing affordable housing in the community. I'll discuss council goals and objectives more in the next slide. At the end of my presentation, I will end with an update on estimated funding and next steps. First, a brief overview of the Housing Authority. The mission of the Burbank Housing Authority is working together for a safe, beautiful, and thriving community. The goals and objectives outlined in these documents continues to meet the requirements of the Section Eight Program tailored to the Burbank community within the funding allocation provided each year, including, as noted on this slide, to improve and expand rental opportunities for lower-income households. New to report this year is an allocation of 13 additional Section Eight vouchers awarded in September of 2022. Staff has selected applicants from the waiting list and is going through the eligibility process to issue those vouchers. In order to continue to receive Section Eight Program funding, the two HUD required documents are the Annual Plan for the upcoming fiscal year, which provides a progress report for the third year of the 2020-2025 Five-Year Plan and the Administrative Plan, which establishes local policies and procedures for administering the Section Eight Program. Each document is explained in more detail in the next couple of slides. In the third year of the Five-Year Plan, the Burbank Housing Authority has assisted 843 extremely low and very low-income households. This figure includes 15 Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing Vouchers, or VASH vouchers. Staff continues to work with the VA to receive referrals for one available VASH voucher. As we mentioned earlier, staff is in the process of reviewing eligibility for households to utilize 13 Section Eight vouchers allocated last October. Furthermore, the Burbank Housing Authority continues to review applications for the 67 emergency housing vouchers, the EHVs, received in 2021 through the American Rescue Act. Of the 67 vouchers received, as of tonight, 39 vouchers have been utilized and another 15 vouchers have been issued and are seeking housing. This population of EHVs experience challenges and barriers that cause a significant delay in the processes and procedures that the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, also known as LASSA, and the Housing Authority must follow to determine eligibility. Staff continues to work with LASSA to make referrals to the program. Also, all 20 of the permanent supportive housing vouchers are completely utilized. Finally, staff educates the public on programs, including the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, also known as FSS. HUD also requires housing authorities to submit revisions to the Administrative Plan if necessary. The Administrative Plan establishes local policies and procedures for administering the program in compliance with regulations and requirements. The primary proposed changes this year are: One, the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. HUD required housing authorities to update their FSS action plan to reflect amended regulations. Two, the EHV waiting lists. Staff revised the policies and procedures to establish an EHV waiting list. And three, staff revised the definition of homelessness to the glossary. The proposed program documents were presented as required to the Resident Advisory Board made up of current program participants. A public meeting was held on February 15th, 2023. The meeting was advertised in the city's website, published in the Los Angeles Times, and more than 850 postcards were mailed in English, Spanish, and Armenian. The Resident Advisory Board did not have any questions, comments, or changes to the documents. Furthermore, no comments have been received on the draft documents that have been posted on the city website and available on the first floor of the Community Services Building. In November 2022, the mayor inquired about requesting additional Section Eight vouchers. In response, staff requested additional funding from HUD through required reporting systems last year and continues to request funds as needed to fund available vouchers. As explained in this presentation, the Burbank Housing Authority has allocated 1,042 vouchers for different voucher programs. However, the Housing Authority does not receive enough funding for all allocated vouchers. Each month, housing staff submits expenditure information and based on the report, if necessary, staff will request for additional funds within the budget allocation. Furthermore, staff continues to apply and request new vouchers as opportunities arise along with new funding that is required to utilize the vouchers. Burbank Housing Authority has not yet received the final program budget for housing assistance payments for the upcoming fiscal year. However, notice was given that we can expect an increase of 7.5% over last year's expenses. Therefore, staff is budgeting for an estimated total of $11 million to administer the program. With this level of funding, it is expected that the Burbank Housing Authority will fund all current 843 voucher holders on the program, plus the 13 new vouchers allocated. EHVs receive a separate pool of funds. As funds are available, staff will issue additional vouchers up to the allocation of 1,042. This requires staff to closely monitor voucher utilization, turnover, and funding, and as funds are available, new applicants will be selected from the waiting list following the processes outlined in the Administrative Plan. If approved this evening, the updated Administrative Plan and Annual Plan will be submitted to HUD by the deadline of April 15, 2023, to continue to receive federal funding. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ivasian. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. If you wish to speak in person, please fill out a salmon public hearing card and send it to the city clerk. Madam City Clerk, do we have any salmon cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll move on. Do we have any calls?
Nope.
All right, there being no public comment, I now close the public comment period. Staff can, if you want to respond, if there's anything else, there were no speakers, so it's up to you. You still have time if you want to say anything else. Okay. Great. We've completed the impervious public comment for the public hearing. Let's see. Counsel, do we have any questions for staff? And before we ask any questions, I will remind you, this is a federally funded program. We're very limited in what we can and cannot do, so who would like to start? Councilmember Perez?
Thank you all for the presentation. I know how limiting working with the Section Eight vouchers can be, so I appreciate everything you're doing to make it work and, you know, help almost 1,000 folks, households. I have a question about the FSS program. What barriers or reasons are we possibly seeing, if any, for those four participant households that were remaining to enroll?
Staff is continuously reaching out to program participants, trying to get program participants to participate in the program. We have only four slots left and we have two currently that are, I'm going to say that they're going to be future successful completions. And so we'll have a total of two more. So staff is continuously reaching out to participants to try to get them to participate, but it's, you know, it's kind of hard to try to get the folks to want to try to participate because it's a program where, you know, we're trying to get them to be more self-sufficient. And so that's a bit of a challenge for some of the participants.
Thank you. I'm always curious when you see these programs because that is my bread and butter. And so it's interesting to know what the challenges are and maybe what we can do to incentivize people to participate and get back on their feet. And then another question I had, moving back to the HCV Section Eight vouchers. So the staff report and the admin plan mentioned that tenants have portability with their vouchers, right? And I was wondering, do we have data on how many folks have chosen to take that voucher outside of Burbank, you know, if they can find a place? And if so, is there a trend where people tend to transfer the most?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we do have 58 total participants that have ported out, meaning they've taken their voucher to another housing authority. And as far as a trend, it's all dependent on the housing market for the city of Burbank. You know, folks do try to find something first in Burbank and if they're unsuccessful, then they decide to transfer to another housing authority, another city where the rental market is a bit more affordable.
And if I could add, Councilmember, also in addition to the port out, we do have households that port into the community. So it really does go both ways. There are opportunities. And so nationally for the program, as the council may be aware, there is that option for movement. So as the statistics that Ms. Ivasian reported, there are port outs. We also have a number that do port in and we're able to, if we have the ability to absorb the meaning, we bring them on to our own funding and program or we bill the other housing agencies, depending on the situation.
Do we have a number for those that port in?
Porters, we have currently 34.
Great, thank you. And then one final question on that same note. In the report, it mentions that BHA works cooperatively with other housing authorities to transfer, you know, tenants. Can you give me a little bit more detail on how that happens?
Sure. So if a tenant decides to utilize their voucher to another housing authority, they inform their request in writing and their caseworker will then transfer their case to whichever housing authority they wish this program. You are able to utilize your voucher nationwide, so it can be anywhere. You can be living here in Burbank and then in the next month you can be living in New York. So it just all depends on where the participant wishes to transfer.
Great, thank you. And I'd love to see if we have it, data on where folks are transferring. I think that's very interesting to see what the trend is. Are they staying locally? Are they heading out? And...
I can answer that. Majority of the folks, I'm going to say the three most popular cities is going to be LA City, LA County, City of Glendale, City of Pasadena. Those are four, actually.
Okay, so staying pretty local.
Pretty local, yes.
All right, well, great. Those port out to port in numbers are great, actually, so thank you for that.
Of course, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for the information. Sounds like a lot of successful elements to this program. And I'm particularly interested in the Family Self-Sufficiency Program that Councilmember Perez mentioned. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a relatively new program, right?
Actually, it's not.
Oh!
It's not. The Family Self-Sufficiency Program started in 1993, actually. Yes.
Great, thank you. And from the staff report, it appears to be quite successful. How many families this year did you have?
We've had a total of 46 successful families that have graduated from the program.
And so when they graduate, what happens to their voucher? Does it get released into the back end of the pool?
No, they don't lose their voucher. It depends on the family and it depends on how self-sufficient they have become. We have had families that have decided to give up their voucher and they have purchased their own home. They've moved on, you know, starting their own little business. It just all depends on the family and the amount that we were able to save for the family for them to graduate from the program.
Okay, great. And is the FSS just for Section Eight folks?
Currently, it's for housing choice voucher participants, so yes.
Great, thank you. I have a couple more questions.
If I may add, pardon me, Councilmember Tagahashi. I just wanted to add that this program is being phased out. So as Ms. Ivasian mentioned earlier, in 1993, the allocation of 50 and there's been the successful graduations. And so earlier we heard from the council member the question on only two. So as folks graduate and there are successful graduations, I just wanted to point out that the program is being phased out. So that's why we're down to the two and not a higher number. So wanted to clarify that.
That's unfortunate. So, okay. Just quickly, why is it being phased out? I mean, it seems like a very successful program to help our folks.
I would agree, certainly agree. And while this federal program is being phased out, we do have other programs in our community. We do have the Lifting People Up Program that you've heard of that our partner Home Again LA assists with and that specifically is funding through restricted housing funds also for lower-income households at risk of homelessness. So you've seen the advertisements for programming, financial assistance, all of that too, very similar to FSS, provide that self-sufficiency to households. So while this federal program, for the various reasons, is being phased out, we are looking at other ways that we can continue to do this for our community.
Great, that's great news. Switching gears a little bit towards the other end of it, you'd mentioned in one of your slides to continue to educate landlords and program participants. I'm particularly interested in increasing the landlord availability. So just briefly, how do you approach landlords and invite them to join, be willing to accept Section Eight vouchers? And in addition, the new housing that's being developed, are those also a possibility of them participating in it?
Of course. Landlords are very much welcome to participate in this program and they are more than welcome to list their available units with the Housing Authority. They may contact our office and I can give the phone number, (818) 238-5160. Contact our office to list your vacant unit. And what we do with that listing is we provide it to our program participants who are in search of a unit. And in response to, can you repeat the second part of your question? I'm so sorry.
Yes, so we're building quite a number of new developments. I'm wondering if they are going to be potentially invited to participate and bring them into this program as well?
Absolutely, yes. New developments, again, I'm just going to call them new landlords. They are more than welcome to participate as well. And when our participants are in search of a housing, what we do is we provide a briefing packet that has a lot of resources. And in those resources are lists of projects that are either coming on board or are existing. And in those resources are lists of projects that are either coming on board or are existing. So we encourage our participants to, you know, contact and inquire, and especially the deed-restricted properties. So yes.
Right, great. I have just two more questions. So if I do a little bit of a back-of-the-napkin math, it seems to me that there's roughly about 200 vouchers that are not being funded or not being used. Am I doing the math right? You said that we don't have enough funding for all the vouchers?
Correct. And do you wish me to?
Yes, please.
Sorry, sorry. And that's due to, pretty much, the market right now. The rents are so high that, yes, we are allocated 1,042 vouchers, but our expenditures, meaning the housing authority payments that we spend, is too much. And so that's why we're not able to meet the 1,042 at this time.
Right. So can you please explain the value of having these unfunded vouchers in hand if we don't have the funding for them? Is it the hope that we will have the funding later and be able to use them?
Absolutely. And so what HUD teaches housing authorities, pretty much, is in order for us to receive more funding, we have to spend more. And so, yes, so we are in the process of pulling applicants, trying to get more folks to receive a voucher and to find a unit. So that is our goal.
Got it, okay.
If I may add, Councilmember, just one more thing to add to what Ms. Ivasian was explaining. I think it's important for the community also to know, with the funding allocation that we do receive from HUD, what we have done is we provide the largest subsidy available. So we pretty much maximize that subsidy to each household because of our higher rent. So HUD gives us that flexibility. We can provide a lower subsidy at the lower end, or we can provide a maximum subsidy. And as a matter of fact, I do want to mention, we have a waiver to even go above what typically some housing authorities do because we want to do maximize that subsidy level for our households so that they're not rent burdened. So what happens is, because of the budget allocation and that higher subsidy that we have chosen, the council has directed to provide, is that we're on the higher end of our subsidy level. So that means less folks can get an allocation, or can get a voucher, or have funding for that voucher. But as Ms. Ivasian explained, so we've got to keep showing that we are spending money to get more money. So as HUD then sees this reporting every year, and we request this money, they will utilize the past year to project forward. Okay, Burbank is now doing X, Y, and Z, and they'll continue to increase, hopefully, that funding. So that's what Ms. Ivasian was explaining in her presentation. We're monitoring people coming off the program. Who can we pull? How can we continue to increase expenditures, still at this high subsidy level, so that we can continue to get more funding to utilize more of those vouchers?
Great, great, thank you. And one last question. There's a waiting list to get on the Section 8 voucher, right? How long is that waiting list, out of curiosity?
Currently, on our waiting list, we have, it's a bit a high number, but we have 26,347 applicants on the waiting list, of which 3,144 are applicants who either reside in Burbank or are working in Burbank, or are homeless individuals working with our service providers.
Okay, so you said there's about 3,000 Burbank folks on the list?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Mullins?
Well, this is a perfect segue to my question. So the number, great job, by the way, in outreach and providing the explanation you provided in the report. I do have a couple of questions. One is, with the amount of people who are on the waiting list, the number one, I don't want to say complain, but concern that people usually ask, you know, when I'm out in the community, I've been on the waiting list for five, six years, and my neighbor just moved here and got the voucher, and she's able to get it, or he's able to get it. Can you explain quickly, please, the process of what, how do these people move on the list? How do they bump up from being number 1,000 to maybe number 80 on the list? Thank you.
I'd be happy to, Councilmember Mullins. So the way the waiting list works is it's weighed by preferences, okay? So if, let's say, we have an applicant who's on what we call the non-resident list, okay? That means they are not living in Burbank, not working in Burbank, and they are a homeless individual. That doesn't work with one of our service providers. And this applicant, for example, moves to Burbank. What they do is they update the housing authority of their change, and then they, at that point, will then receive the preference for the resident list. And so that's how the changes occur on our waiting list, and based on the preferences that they have, whether it's if you're disabled, if you're a homeless individual working with a service provider, if you're a veteran, and what else am I missing? Pretty much the preferences that are weighed. And so we don't go by a number system on our waiting list. It is all based on the preferences. And if we have the availability to pull an applicant, what we then do is we utilize our software, and we put in the number of applicants we want to pull, and it automatically draws out the names.
So if I could, I just want to flush that out a little bit, because, so what they'll do is someone could have four different, four points, let's call it four points. They'll have people with four points, three points, two points, one point, and then out-of-city people, maybe with zero points. So you'll do a poll from everybody ranked four to meet the number, and then you'll go to the next one. So it goes in classes that way, I believe.
Right. So again, it's weighed by the preferences. So each preference has a weight amount. For example, if you have the residency preference, it could be weighed at 10 points. So if, let's say you have a total of 30 points, right? And so if you have 30 points, you're kind of bubbled to the top of the list. And so your chances are higher to be pulled when we have what we call the opening to pull applicants from the waiting list.
In that way, the preference also applies to income and the amount of people in the household for the amount of income that you make?
Not the preference. The income is, think of it as separate. And so if you are within the area median income, so like, let's say, it depends on which range you're in, if you're in the low, very low, and so forth. So if we're going to be pulling from the very low, then the system automatically pulls from those applicants with that amount of income.
Councilmember, if I could add to what Ms. Ivasian has been explaining, and give a little background, is that the applicant waiting list right now is currently closed. And to answer the question about the constituents and residents asking about no movement, we do have, as you heard the numbers, all those folks on the waiting list. However, they can certainly call in, and not call in, but provide updates to the application. And what you've been hearing is, in our administrative plan, because of the council's goals of meeting the needs of the most needy and vulnerable. So there isn't a number system, as was being explained. So it's not if you applied in the first day, in the first hour, when the waiting list opened. It really has been the desire of this council and last councils to meet the most needy and vulnerable. So the preferences for homelessness, as you heard, preferences for veterans, all of those preferences. And we heard from the city attorney, those are all weighted. We do have a software system that then will generate that list. So I do want to emphasize, folks do have to be on the current Section 8 waiting list. And when there is an opportunity, as was mentioned earlier, for these 13 new vouchers, we have now selected, based on the preferences and the adopted housing administrative plan. And then we utilize that methodology to then select to meet the goals of the city council according to the preference mechanism.
Thank you. My other quick question in regards to the emergency housing vouchers, the 67 vouchers, you reflect here that you've used 38, and then another 15. So it looks like we have about 14 left to be used. If you can just provide a quick explanation to what are those used for, for specific cases, or you can use them to help also offset some of the vouchers that we talked about based on their preference?
The EHB vouchers are specifically for EHB participants. And so can you just repeat the second part of the question?
Sure.
I'm so sorry, Councilmember.
No, no, no problem. It's on page two. And we are looking at 67 emergency housing vouchers, which is the EHB. And in the report, it says that 38 voucher has been utilized, and other 15 vouchers have been issued to those households that are looking for a unit. So the total so far that we've used, I believe, is 53. So do we still have 14 vouchers left? And what would those be used for, and when would they be used?
So currently, staff is in the process of receiving more applications to receive a voucher. So yes, we have the 15 left, and we are working with LASSA to receive more applications in order for us to issue those vouchers and hopefully get those folks housed.
If I may add, Councilmember, as well, to what Ms. Ivasian has stated, the emergency housing vouchers are a very specific allocation for households who meet the criteria of being homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee, domestic violence, dating violence, recently homeless. So we do have to follow the specific targeted group, and there is a chapter for the public to see in our administrative plan on emergency housing vouchers. So those remaining vouchers, as you've pointed out, we are in the process, as Ms. Ivasian has indicated, going through applications through the required referral system, because it's a very specific group of clientele, working with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Agency through the coordinated entry system, then back to us, and reviewing those applications. So we do have applications and continue to receive applications that we review, then for eligibility, to finalize those, use of those final vouchers.
Thank you, perfect. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, all right. Any further questions from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent presentation. My colleagues answered all my questions. I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let me close the public hearing. And it is now council's turn to deliberate. Do we have any deliberations? It seems very straightforward. Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution of the Burbank Housing Authority approving, number one, the Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Number two, updates to the Section 8 Administrative Plan. And number three, authorizing the executive director to execute the certifications required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Schultz, seconded by Perez. Council, call the roll.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have three reports to counsel this evening. If you wish to speak at a report, please fill out a yellow comment card and hand it to the city clerk. First report is the 2023 Update on the City of Burbank's Economy. Mrs. Mary Hamzoean, Economic Development Manager, and Mrs. Marissa Minor, Senior Administrative Analyst in the Community Development Department, please present the report.
Okay, perfect. Make sure this... Oh, can I get the slides one moment? Thank you so much. Try to get next to the mic. Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and esteemed members of City Council. My name is Marissa Minor, and I will be kicking off today's presentation and update on Burbank's economy. Tonight, our team will focus on providing an overview of Burbank's economy based on current economic indicators and trends in the marketplace. This overview is the first step in a multi-phased process that will help lay the groundwork data for the Economic Development Strategic Plan that is going to be developed and presented to council later in 2023. Tonight's presentation will also highlight factors affecting our economy in the form of strengths and opportunities that contribute to Burbank's success, including the efforts of our Economic Development Division. So to start, I'm going to refamiliarize everyone with an overview of what economic development does. Then I'll provide some examples of the programs and projects that we focus on. Economic development seeks to increase the standard of living by facilitating the creation of jobs, supporting innovation and new ideas, attracting investment, increasing sales tax revenue, creating vibrant neighborhoods, and improving the overall quality of life. Our primary goal is to cultivate and maintain a safe, beautiful, and thriving community. There are four key ways that we accomplish these goals: business attraction, business retention and expansion, entrepreneurship, and tourism. As you can imagine, we conduct a variety of tasks to support all of these goals. So instead of going through each of the programs, I'm going to provide some high-level details on each slide, and then I'll share some stories to connect our goals and endeavors with outcomes. Outreach and communication is one of the keys to our success, and that was certainly the case with Black Angus. Initially, our team had reached out to Black Angus as we heard that their lease for their current restaurant space was expiring in 2023, and we wanted to discuss potential for relocation to a new site. We provided multiple sites that would be a good fit, and ultimately, Black Angus decided to stay at their existing location and work out an agreement with the owner. During these conversations, however, we were also informed that Black Angus was looking for a potential office space to relocate their headquarters. We saw this as an advantageous opportunity for Black Angus, and they agreed. We connected Black Angus Corporate to 3,000 square feet of office space, and they brought 25 employees to the area. As a bonus, the new headquarters enables their team to test new menus and initiatives easily, thanks to its walking distance from their popular downtown Burbank location. Another example of attraction efforts are our business concierge services. Through relationships with local developers, property owners, and brokers, we're able to assist with things like site selection, business resources, and in general, help guide new businesses through our city's permitting processes. Recently, a downtown Burbank property owner reached out to connect us with a potential tenant looking at the former Mr. Kebab space. The tenant had several questions about outdoor dining and overall fit of his concept for the area. Understanding that the tenant would be a great fit for downtown, we quickly set up meetings and later met with the tenant onsite to discuss the potential for outdoor dining permits, timeframes for openings, and introducing the tenant to the events and promotional opportunities that exist in the area. After looking at space in Burbank and other neighboring cities, I'm happy to report that Republic Coffee Lounge has elected to lease space in Burbank. The property owner later shared with us that the assistance and guidance received from economic development was the reason that they chose Burbank. Another method of attraction that we use is marketing and promoting our business incentives and why companies should choose Burbank. In addition to print and digital ads, we have a dedicated website, chooseburbank.com, that hosts a plethora of information and resources, as well as a comparison of doing business in Burbank versus Los Angeles. This comparison is an important factor for companies and developers when they're selecting sites and considering where to locate. Each year, our team attends the largest retail conference in the U.S. and other important retail-focused events to meet with potential retail brokers and developers to attract tenants to Burbank. We conduct direct outreach with brokers representing tenants that we're looking to attract, and we work closely with property owners to market their spaces. Recently, these efforts resulted in the attraction of the businesses that you see here on this slide. Retention is a high priority for economic development, and we understand that companies have choices when it comes to where they locate. They can be here or in another city. We want to ensure that our businesses are supported and valued, and so we maintain several programs that support our existing business community, including our Business Visitation Program. This program allows economic development staff the opportunity to meet one-on-one with businesses, to build relationships and share resources. A great example of that relationship building is our successful visit with Film Tools. At our initial meeting with the company, we learned what the business concerns and needs were, and from there, we were able to provide free, personalized training for their customer service staff. Later, the relationship continued as we liaised with Film Tools and our public work staff to assist with repaving their alleyway. Having this communication and collaboration is important, because when businesses feel supported, they will continue to grow and thrive. We champion the entrepreneurial spirit here and offer many programs that provide opportunities for the startup and small business community. Our Burbank entrepreneurship programming assists founders in various stages, from ideation all the way through execution. Through our innovative programming, we've worked to cultivate an ecosystem here in Burbank, and now we've expanded our reach with our partners in Glendale by launching Upstart Valley, our regional identity, which seeks to generate awareness for Burbank and Glendale as a tech hub. The ultimate goal of these programs is to attract new businesses and talent to Burbank. This can be a long process, but we are always excited when a connection is made or a new idea comes to fruition. Recently, through our new Startup Academy Burbank program, we were introduced to a business named Mr. Pop-Up Chef. The business owner has a food truck that is often in the Burbank area and was happy to be taking part in the new academy, which benefits early-stage founders in building successful, ready-to-launch startups. We connected with the business owner to provide information on some of the resources we offer, and also discuss their potential interest in a brick-and-mortar space. We were able to generate a report for the business with recommended locations that would fit their budget and provide good visibility. We hope that Mr. Pop-Up Chef will eventually become a permanent We hope that Mr. Pop-Up Chef will eventually become a permanent Burbank business, and through this programming, we can continue to support entrepreneurs and small businesses like them. Economic development manages the efforts of the Tourism Business Improvement District, or TBID, also sometimes known as Visit Burbank. Tourism is very important to Burbank, and we have an average of 7,700 visitors to our city every day. Our tourism efforts have helped to increase occupancy and transient occupancy tax since the inception of the TBID in 2011. There are a variety of ways that we enhance tourism in Burbank, including event partnerships like the one developed with Muse Expo. Our staff first learned of Muse Expo, an international music and media conference, and its organizer in early 2018. At that time, the event was held in Hollywood, and the attendees weren't happy with the location due to some ongoing safety concerns. When we learned more about the event, we knew that it had to be held in the media capital of the world. We discussed with the organizers how Burbank would be the ideal location to relocate to and shared many local venues that would fit their specific needs, including the Castaway. Our staff also worked closely with Muse Expo to obtain a sponsorship from Visit Burbank, which secured the international event in our city. Our relationship with Muse Expo has been a great win for Burbank, and the benefits of having this event here are many, including our recent sister city signing with Orazo Italy that developed as a result of the 2022 Muse Expo event. Economic development also manages the efforts of the Downtown Property-Based Business Improvement District, or PBID. Downtown development is another major component of tourism development, and as Mary noted earlier, it has for twenty years. We've worked hand-in-hand with the PBID to enhance the economic vitality of the area. This evening, you approved the annual report for downtown Burbank, and it's great to know that everyone is pleased with the work that we've done to evolve that neighborhood. One of the more notable programs that we attracted to downtown that has made a significant impact to the area and had a trickle effect citywide is our hospitality and social service outreach program through Street Plus. Back in March of 2019, the PBID brought Street Plus on to facilitate a program that would mitigate issues with street performers, the unhoused, and general safety and maintenance concerns. The first year of our program, our Transportation Division also contracted with Street Plus to provide security services and outreach at the downtown MetroLink station, which helped to create economies of scale with our contracts for service. The program proved to be a great success, supporting local businesses and guests and also making a huge impact on the unhoused community. Since the program's inception in March of 2019, 145 individuals have been housed, received housing support, and/or transportation back to their families. In light of the program's great success, in partnership with the PBID, the city expanded its outreach using the services of Street Plus, who have now been instrumental in making referrals to community organizations, securing housing, clothing, and medical assistance, and developing family reunifications, along with assisting individuals in obtaining their critical identity documentation. And now, after that brief overview, I'd like to turn it over to Mary Hamzoyan, our Economic Development Manager, who's going to dive into the economic update report.
Thank you, Ms. Minor, and good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. Just as a reminder, tonight's presentation will begin with an overview of our economy and dive into our strengths, opportunities, and areas of focus, which include jobs and business growth, leisure and hospitality, real estate sectors, and housing. I want to mention and clarify that the information you will see tonight is probably already dated. Data is constantly changing and updating, so we're going to provide you with a good overview of the economic challenges and changes we have seen and where we think we are going. The city of Burbank has a resilient economy. Like other cities, we have been affected by recessions and the pandemic, and each time, we have felt our dips, but we have come back even stronger. Part of this is because of our location and proximity to Los Angeles. But the major contributing factor is our strong media and entertainment presence that is comprised of more than 1,000 businesses, such as Warner Brothers Discovery, Walt Disney Company, Netflix, Nickelodeon, and smaller creative companies that provide post-production, visual effects, sound, and more. Burbank has a robust jobs market with 142,000 jobs. Fifty-seven thousand of those are in the media and entertainment industry. Some of the additional top-line demographics include 105,000 population, estimated daytime population of 200,000, 12,400 businesses, average household income of 125,000, and median income of 89,000. While Burbank is resilient, we still face many challenges ahead as we try to navigate through the lingering impacts from the pandemic, such as the ongoing work-from-home trends, along with inflation, supply chain issues, and a possible recession. The next slide provides an overview of the top ten industries in Burbank, with entertainment providing three times more jobs than the next largest sector of the healthcare services. Breaking it down even further, this chart shows the number of employees from our top ten employers. One of the major areas of focus in the report is jobs and business growth. As you can imagine, this area continues to evolve and is constantly changing. So here's what we know now. Burbank's jobs have almost completely recovered to pre-pandemic levels, with 142,000 jobs in 2022, which is slightly lower than 149,000 jobs in 2019. Most of these positions are physically located in Burbank, while still, some still remain remote and may do so for the future. Many companies are requiring their employees to return to work at least three days a week. We know that Disney employees were asked to return to work four days a week beginning this month. Our businesses have stated that the hybrid work schedule has created many challenges and opportunities for both the businesses and the employees. Companies like Cast and Crew and Netflix are trying to keep employees engaged, creating opportunities and incentives for them to return to the workplace. They are also challenged with additional space and jobs that they may no longer need, which has prompted them to right-size their physical space requirements. Cast and Crew is subleasing 45,000 square feet of their space, while Netflix is subleasing 180,000 square feet of their space. We also recently learned that Disney is reducing their workforce globally by 7,000 jobs. We don't know what the impacts are for Burbank, yet we do know that 3,000 of the jobs are in positions that are unfilled, so essentially a hiring freeze, while the real impacts are to 4,000 jobs, which will result in a $5.5 billion savings for Disney. While some companies may be right-sizing their employees and space, others are expanding and adding more jobs. We know that Worth Real Estate and Warner Brothers are moving forward with building an additional sixteen new sound stages in Burbank at the Ranch property. This has the potential to increase jobs by 2,000 to 3,000 in the next five years. We also have learned through our business visits that St. Joe's Medical Center and UCLA Health are in need of additional medical office space for their physicians. This will also increase the growth in jobs in the future. However, if we continue to see a trend of subleases and right-sizing, the city may need to consider allowing for adaptive reuse. What that means is reusing an existing building for a purpose other than which it was originally built or designed. So office developments in Burbank may be looked at that, if there is a potential for that. This is an expensive prospect, so the trend would really need to continue long enough to significantly impact and reduce the value of office property and rents before we even consider that. Since 2017, we have seen that overall number of jobs have remained in the mid-140,000 range, peaking at 149,000 in 2019. We also see that the media sector has fluctuated between 60,000 jobs at its highest to 53,000 jobs at its lowest. These fluctuations can be a result of mergers, layoffs, peak-slow production times. However, with the exception of 2020, overall jobs have remained steady. To recap, the jobs and business growth sector, Burbank is still strong and has the largest concentration of entertainment companies in the country. Burbank jobs are some of the highest-paying jobs in the entertainment and digital media. The average household income in Burbank is 125,000. The average annual income for jobs in the media and entertainment sector for one employee is 166,000. On average, one employee in the media industry makes more money than an average household in Burbank. We are always thinking of ways to diversify our jobs portfolio so that we aren't dependent on the media sector. However, again, through our business visits and our research, we have learned that the media and entertainment industry is multifaceted and resilient. The industry has many subsectors included within it that has helped safeguard the effects of the potential downturn. The current areas of growth in this industry include visual effects, animation, sound, post-production, music, gaming, entertainment, equipment rental, and innovation. The more we can diversify in these subcategories, the better insulated we will be in case of another downturn. Planning ahead for the future, our staff will add strategies to our new Economic Development Strategic Plan to address how we best move forward with diversifying our business portfolio and the potential for adaptive reuse of our existing office buildings. One of the areas that continues to struggle is our leisure and hospitality sector. Not only was this sector hit hard due to the decline in travel, but it was also adversely affected by the lack of workforce in the labor market. However, we've noticed that there is a growth trajectory with occupancy at the end of 2022 at 73.3%. This is higher than the 2021 occupancy of 67.9%. As Ms. Minor mentioned, there are currently 7,700 visitors in Burbank every day, or about 2.8 million visitors annually. Prior to the pandemic, that figure was 9,600 visitors a day, or 3.5 million annually. Business travel has not yet fully recovered. That's due to the ongoing hybrid work policies and the ability for meetings to be virtually. In 2021, 7.6% of the 2.8 million visitors, or roughly 212,000 visitors, traveled to Burbank for business. In 2018, 10.7%, or 374,000 of the 3.5 million visitors, traveled here on business. While it may seem that Burbank's business travel has always been stronger than the leisure travel market, that is not the case and hasn't been in the past. Burbank's business travel market comprises 10% of our visitor market in Burbank. There is also some crossover in both segments, known as the "leisure market," which is a term used to describe travel that combines both business and leisure. Visitors on a leisure trip typically add a few extra days to their business trip for leisure. This was evident with the international travelers that we recently witnessed at the Muse Expo event that was held here in Burbank in March. There were many international travelers who were extending their stay beyond the conference. Even with the 72.3% occupancy, Burbank's tourism market is still strong, as most other cities would be content with an average occupancy rate of 70%, which is an industry benchmark that indicates that there is enough demand for tourism and the potential for more hotels. There are multiple factors that contribute to the strong tourism industry in Burbank, including its central location to Los Angeles, a dedicated destination marketing organization known as Visit Burbank, and of course, our Hollywood Burbank Airport, whose passenger figures are almost completely back to pre-pandemic levels at 5.8 million passengers in 2022. Our tourism indicators show that growth in the tourism sector is moving in the right direction. However, experts predict that tourism figures won't fully rebound back to pre-pandemic figures until 2024. To recap, the leisure and hospitality industry, 2022 occupancy rate was 73.3%, which is above industry benchmark figures. We had 2.8 million visitors come to Burbank in 2021. Visit Burbank is actively attracting new visitors to fill heads and beds, what we call it, through sponsorships to multi-day conferences like Muse Expo, as well as funding art installations like the newly unveiled Wonder Woman statue to generate awareness of Burbank as a destination. Travel is picking up with new routes at the Hollywood Burbank Airport, and continued investment in hotels is also driving our force. We have an additional four hotels that are under construction or consideration that will be adding a total of 877 rooms to our inventory. With new hotels coming online, there may be concern about oversaturation. Burbank's demand has historically outpaced its supply. We had two new hotels that entered the market in 2016. Occupancy remained above 76% despite the new inventory, proving that there is demand for new hotels in Burbank. Currently, the city has eighteen major hotels and 2,569 rooms. Additional strategies for hotel demand, occupancy, the need to collaborate for the 2028 Olympics, and additional art and cultural programs will be included in the new Economic Development Strategic Plan. Our next area of focus is our real estate sectors, where we will look at office, retail, industrial, and housing. Office vacancy rates have increased in fourth quarter 2022 due to the onset of the subleases that were previously discussed. We are seeing higher-than-usual office vacancy rates in downtown due to the Aramark sublease of 91,000 square feet, and in the airport district due to a couple of subleases. Netflix, Hasbro, Cast and Crew have a combined total of subleases of just over 300,000, as well as the new office product that has come online at the Avion Project. We'll continue to monitor the situation with subleases and activity with the property owners to attract new businesses. And again, I'm going to talk about adaptive reuse for existing businesses, if it becomes necessary and if it becomes feasible. Citywide office vacancy rates have increased 6.2% in the fourth quarter, from 6.2% in fourth quarter 2021 to 11.9% in fourth quarter 2022. The media district has also seen an increase in office vacancy due to the sublease of WeWorks and the addition of the new Warner Brothers Second Century Project. This is creating some shifts in the existing office market in the media district because Warner Brothers is consolidating all of their employees from multiple office buildings that they have in Burbank and taking them into the Second Century Project. And so, this is creating a little bit of a shift. The only area that has maintained a stable vacancy rate is the Magnolia Park area with a 2.8% office vacancy rate. So office lease rates have also increased. This is not typical, typically the case in other cities, because as supply increases, demand drives prices down. But Burbank is unique in our office market. We have a strong office market, and even throughout the pandemic, there is a continued interest and demand for office development in Burbank, specifically in the media and entertainment industry, and as well as the medical industry, as we stated with the request for additional office and medical space. In summary, there is still demand for office space in Burbank, and there are multiple projects that are under construction or already approved that have added or will be adding additional office space to the inventory, such as Avion Burbank, Arrow Crossing, Warner Brothers Second Century Project, and the Warner Brothers Ranch Project. Burbank's office vacancy rates are unusually high due to the existing subleases. Retail sales remained mostly strong throughout the pandemic. Our sales tax revenues have surpassed our pre-pandemic levels, and in 2022, we received approximately 59 million in sales tax revenue, including Measure P funds. While sales tax revenue increased, some retailers benefited more than others during the pandemic, and many retailer-restaurant establishments weren't able to withstand the economic downturn. Most of these establishments were replaced with new emerging or more established concepts like Finney's, Silver Lake Ramen, and Mendocino Farms. These are just a few names. Attraction efforts and business concierge services play an important role in attracting new tenants and assisting them with opening their businesses in a timely manner. Many spaces that look empty and dormant are actually leased and waiting for their permits or construction. Examples of these are the former Fuddraker Space and the former Color Me Mine Space. Both spaces have been leased for more than six months and have been on hold because the tenant wasn't ready to move forward with construction, or they haven't submitted updated plans. So these are areas that we continue to assist these tenants with through our business concierge efforts. But on average, it takes about 30 months to release a space in downtown Burbank, and about 12 and a half months to release a retail space in the airport district. These are areas that have the highest concentration of retail. Vacancy rates have remained stable, with ups and downs in each district. The only major change in vacancy rates are noted in the airport district, as retail vacancy increased to 8.5% in the fourth quarter 2022 due to the addition of the new retail space at the Avion Project, as well as vacancy that was left at the Hometown Buffet, which is currently under entitlement for Amy's Restaurant, and the closure of the Fry's Electronic Store, which has since been approved for a mixed-use residential project called Arrow Crossing. Burbank's restaurant sector is also included in the retail figures. Restaurants were hit hardest during the pandemic, and the city's efforts to create outdoor dining and provide flexibility for many struggling restaurants allowed them to keep their doors open. The Economic Development Strategic Plan, in addition to the specific plans for downtown Burbank Airport and media districts, will look at opportunities to extend outdoor dining options. Retail lease rates have gradually increased since 2019, with downtown Burbank commanding the overall largest rate. On average, increases have gone up 25 cents in the last three years across all districts. Magnolia Park continues to have the lowest retail lease rate when compared to the remaining commercial districts in Burbank, with a rate of $2.73 a square foot in the fourth quarter 2022 compared to $3.93 for downtown Burbank. Burbank has proven to be resilient in the retail sector and has welcomed many new retail tenants recently, and even throughout the pandemic. There is a good mix of national retail tenants that have come to Burbank, like Sephora, 800 Degrees Pizza, Randy's Donuts, and Urbain Cafe, as well as small, family-owned businesses like Cider Works, Bibi's Cafe, and Unincorporated Coffee. businesses like Cider Works, Bibi's Cafe, and, and Unincorporated Coffee. The ability to attract a strong list of retailers and restaurants is a result of multiple factors, including our focused attraction efforts and concierge services, our ability to provide extended outdoor dining for restaurants, and the continued reinvestment from the private sector into Burbank's shopping centers like the Burbank Town Center, when, where Oni Group purchased the center for a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars with the future intent of adding new office, retail, and housing, as well as the ongoing investment in the Empire Center, which is the highest-grossing shopping center in Southern California. While the retail sector is evolving and online sales are increasing, we must continue to look at ways to allow for flexibility in zoning and allow for uses that may not have been previously considered retail, such as wellness facilities or urgent care facilities. This can be addressed in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, as well as the strategy, as well as the specific plans. In Burbank, there is some scattered industrial flex buildings throughout the city, but the highest concentration of these types of buildings is within the airport district. Avion is a fairly new sixty-acre project located in, in the Hollywood Burbank Airport. It consists of about seventeen buildings with one point two five million square feet of industrial office and hotel space. Roughly one million square feet of that space is industrial and has already been leased. The remaining spaces are for Class A office and some smaller retail components. Industrial vacancy rates are the lowest in the city and have historically always been low. In fourth quarter 2022, industrial vacancy rates were two percent. This basically means there were no vacancies in this category. That's because many entertainment companies are utilizing more of the flex creative spaces in lieu of traditional offices, which is increasing the demand for this type of space. A majority of these industrial buildings are, are occupied by entertainment companies such as the new Monolith Studios, a visual production company that relocated from Valencia to Burbank in late 2022. They're occupying space on Ontario, which is in an industrial building by the airport. Industrial space also demands lower lease rates because of the sheer size of the buildings and the fact that they are generally just a large box. For example, Amazon occupies eight hundred thousand square feet of space at the Avion Project. However, you'll see that there's a slight increase in lease rates in the industrial sector, and that's because of the addition of the Class A office space at the Avion, which has increased that rate. Overall, the, the industrial sector has remained one of the strongest and most highly coveted spaces in Burbank. Historically, we've had a one percent vacancy rate in this sector, and there's always been a demand for more industrial flex creative space because of that entertainment post-production component. The Golden State Specific Plan and the Economic Development Strategic Plan will address the change of use for some of these more traditional manufacturing spaces that have currently been repurposed and are, are being used for this entertainment industry. The last section I'm going to touch on is housing. So, single-family housing demand seems to have cooled down recently. Nationally, housing prices have still increased, but at a, at a much slower pace. In California, media, median prices for the same period went down four point four percent, while Burbank's housing prices also decreased by eighteen point eight percent year-over-year in December. At first, this may seem alarming, but our median home price sales is still expensive, coming in at nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and it is anticipated that the housing prices will rebound. The long-term price growth is a function of supply and demand. California has added three point two times more people than housing units during the last ten years, with an estimated shortfall statewide of about three point five million units. Burbank, like California, has added to the shortfall by not building enough housing to meet the demand. In 2018, Burbank's jobs-to-housing ratio was three point three six jobs to one housing unit. A healthy jobs-to-housing ratio should be between point seventy-five to one point five jobs to one housing unit. When considering all current proposed developments, both commercial and housing, this ratio does not seem to get much better as both jobs and housing are growing. In 2019, city council set a goal to build twelve thousand new, new units for 2035, which is on par with the city's Regional Housing Needs Assessment allocation of eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-two units over the next eight years. Currently, Burbank has three thousand seventy-two units under construction or under consideration. The straight, the state has created bills to streamline, streamline the by right building of housing projects in California, creating additional opportunities for developers while limiting local control. Many housing developers are utilizing these measures when submitting projects. The increase in housing will benefit Burbank by helping retain employees and employers. When speaking with our large employers, they have stated that they have no future plans to develop employee housing like what Lockheed did in the nineteen forties, because they are able to recruit skilled labor within close proximity to Burbank. Large employers are also able to relocate sectors within their own company to other states where there is more economies of scale, more labor, and more housing. An example of this is Disney relocating parts of the Imaginerey Department to Florida. Why is this important? So, housing rents are continuing to increase as a function of supply and demand in Burbank as well. Between December 2018 and December 2022, rents increased for each type of unit. Overall, when accounting for the average for the number of units in each category, rents increased nine point nine four percent over five years, while the average rent was two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars in December 2022. Again, when we look at our average household income in Burbank, the average household income in 2022 was a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and median household income was approximately eighty-eight thousand. Between 2017 and 202022, average household incomes increased thirty-five percent. On the surface, this seems to be a good, to be good, as household income is growing at a faster percentage rate than both housing prices and rents. But in reality, income has a long way to catch up, as housing affordability is still out of reach for most people who want to purchase a home in Burbank, and almost half can't afford an average rental price. To further discuss affordability, an annual income of just shy of ninety-four thousand dollars is needed to afford an average rental property in Burbank, assuming that thirty percent of income is allocated towards rent. And more than two hundred and forty thousand of annual income is needed to spend thirty percent of the household's income for homeownership. There are approximately forty-three thousand estimated households in Burbank, and of those, only forty-seven percent can afford current average rents, and only twelve percent can afford to purchase a new home. To summarize, in the long run, it is imperative for Burbank to build all types of new housing and all levels of affordability, and particularly workforce housing. More units will help to maintain and/or slow increasing rental rates, along with providing more options for current and new Burbank residents. One of the largest areas of focus for Burbank revolves around employer intention. With such high housing prices, Burbank may price itself out of the market. As media companies continue to grow in Burbank, so does the demand for the workforce housing. If we don't have enough housing for employees, the talent and workforce will move further away, and companies may not be able to recruit as easily as they do now. Companies will stay in Burbank and relocate here as long as they can find the talent, but if shortages occur, wages will increase, reducing company profits, and may result in businesses looking for other options and locations. So, as we have shown, Burbank is resilient and has come back stronger each time it was challenged. As Burbank comes out of the pandemic, some threats still linger and will determine how fast our economy will, will grow, and if there are challenges along the way, such as inflation, a recession, or another outbreak. While we have a strong base of nationally-recognized large and small businesses that help keep our local economy growing, we must also continue to devise, diversify our sectors. Our reliance upon media demand and growth also creates a risk of the media market, also creates a risk if the media market slows down and/or other jurisdictions and states offer substantial enticements for companies to relocate. Burbank must continue to provide and protect a climate where all businesses thrive. Additionally, it is important to maintain a happy and skilled workforce by creating a work, creating workforce housing to keep companies in Burbank. It is also important that we continue to recruit retailers and restaurants that meets, meet the needs of our unique neighborhoods, and most importantly, that we continue to offer high level of city services to maintain a safe, beautiful, and thriving community for all. As we begin work on the Economic Development Strategic Plan, staff will hire a consultant to develop the plan, and will, will work closely with the business community, the Chamber of Commerce, and the City Council Economic Development Subcommittee to develop the plan before providing the final document to City Council. This concludes my presentation. Thank you, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. M. Zohian. I have one public speaker, David Donahue.
Good evening, I'm Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, council members. It's a pleasure to be in front of the dais again, and also to staff. It's a pleasure. Excellent presentation. It's kind of like a nice sort of advertisement or commercial for Burbank. And one of the things I wanted to kind of point out was kind of brought up, and I've talked to a few people about it, is parking and charging for parking. I know I heard Councilmember Perez say, wow, that was a lot of money some city collect, millions of dollars. And I am conflicted by the issue of paid parking. One, as a customer of Bank of the West in downtown on San Fernando, it is almost impossible to find parking in the covered structure behind their building. And I had a talk with the, the branch manager, and yes, most of the employees do park there. But I also have to say that as my father-in-law who moved into my ADU in December, we have been having a heck of a time enjoying going to all the restaurants and being able to easily park around and not have to worry about a time limit or the stress of a time limit on some sort of parking issue. So, I would add that free parking could be a bullet point to one of the things for recruiting and the economic development, just one thing. The other thing that was mentioned that I was not intending to talk about was housing. As people may know, I'm a ADU provider. I built one, and I'm a strong Yimby, so yes, in my backyard. It was a pleasure to have Patrick Prescott sit down with me and a few of his office staff, and I enjoyed that, and we talked about pre-approved plans. It was also to, a little bit curious that the planning department, I know that they're very busy, don't have a lot of time, but they, in my opinion, took a cut-and-paste process grabbing from the city of L.A. and some adopted plans, some of them which I think are not buildable, or they would cost a half million to a million dollars to build. So, I think there are developers, there are designers, there are contractors that have plans that have been into and been approved with the city, and that are in people's backyards, like mine, that would be easy, be easier to build. It would be easy to implement a program for a pre-approved ADU system that uses things that are currently here. Thank you very much for all of the work and time that you put into the community. It's truly appreciated, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Council, just for note, this is, this is a note and file, so I don't want to spend too much time on this, but do we have any questions or clarifications of staff? Enjoyed the report, very extensive. Thank you. The outlook is looking good, and hopefully, we can adapt to some of these changes. Thank you. Note and file? Any questions, clarifications?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, since I sit on the Subcommittee with Councilmember Takahashi, I think we had a couple of comments that we wanted to share back with the council. I'd like to let Councilmember Takahashi go first, if she'd like.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. So, part of Nick and I, or Ms., sorry, Councilmember Schultz, or Vice Mayor Schultz and I, were talking about this presentation, as we also would love to hear from you, the three of you as well, what we can take back to the Subcommittee and make sure that we are discussing. So, some of the things that, for me, my perspective on, uh, to be part of the conversation that's not already in this packet, I just wanted to run by you and also get a reflection from you. So, one of the things that I would love to see in our economic plans is a mention and a focus on equity, and looking at equitable ways that we can support and invite traditionally marginalized groups to have businesses and grow their businesses here, and highlight them, and other equitable approaches to economics. So, everybody, not everybody receives the same effects of economic growth, and so to make sure that we are looking at that. So, if that's okay, keep that going. Another aspect, I'm glad it was mentioned on one of the slides here about, slide twenty, about leisure and hospitality, and I had mentioned, and it was included here, I'm really glad it was, the, the fact that our, that our community is so rich with creatives and art and culture, and I think that we can lean on that a little more in our tourism focus, and having Burbank become more of a destination, not just as a place to start from to, to explore the rest of L.A., but also to have some destination art and culture here in Burbank. So, that's something that I also was adding. And then, lastly, and you've heard me talk about this before, is the, the concept of fifteen-minute neighborhoods, and that also is economically positive for our community because it helps individuals have less need to own cars if they don't want to, which has become extremely expensive. I just saw a report the other day about the increase in cost of cars. But also, even if they do have a car, they don't have to drive it, and that they can also live close to where they all do their, get their services, like the grocery store, and the doctor, and the pharmacy and stuff. So, those are three of the, and that includes transit ability and easily to get around. So, those are three of the concepts that I was going to bring, I've been bringing to the Subcommittee meetings, and just wanted to make sure that that was something that was in alignment with the rest of council.
Yeah, that sounds great, actually. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Councilwoman Mullins, yeah?
Oh, go for it.
Thank you. Great points, and I do, I do agree with you. And also to staff, thank you so much, and excellent report, presentation, and I know you guys do a great job in assisting our business community. I do have the concern over our empty buildings, or somewhat, that we're looking at perhaps not able to bring back as many staff members to, you know, for the private sector to come to the offices that we have, and that is a concern for me. I've talked about it for a while, because it does affect our entire economy, does affect our sales tax, our travel, so it is something very important for me. I recently read in the Business Leisure, there's at least four buildings in downtown L.A., the Brookfield Buildings, they, they're bankrupt, and there's two more on, on Broadway, four 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 South Flower. So, those buildings are all very much shut the doors in the bank, has taken back those buildings. It concerns me. I, of course, I never want to see Burbank going down that path. And I would like, I'm not sure I did look on the website to see if we have this information or service on our website to make it easy to search for available office space. So, if we have on our website, because I know I've been asked before, whether by medical offices or just people who want to come here and do business with us, and I've always, you know, turned in to Mary and staff to ask if there is a space available, how do these people find it? Can you work with them? And you guys have always been very responsive. But can we gather data to collect the data to make it available on the website? And the data would have, like, the size, the, the location, the rental cost, I mean, there's a slew of things that we can make sure that we have it on the website. And then, also, this would assist our buildings by having them to put, have an input to, to the website. So, if they have something open, if they have open space, what the square footage, the cost, something, I think, like that, maybe a pool of office spaces that we have in the event that somebody's interested to open a business. And then, I do appreciate the fact that we're looking in the, I think you call it adaptive approach, to look at that adaptive approach in the zoning, do we allow, maybe make a parking exception? We allow a medical building to go in a, a business where it might have not been a medical building before? So, this is very important, because if we don't really focus now, I don't want to end up having what downtown L.A.'s going through right now.
I can respond to that. I can respond to that. Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. So, currently, right now, if you go to our chooseburbank.com website, you see that we ask you to either call us or email us if you're looking for site selection assistance. There's a couple of reasons for that. When these companies call us, or these businesses call us, they talk to an actual person, we guide them through the process, we find out exactly what they're looking for, and we assist them in what type of area or what district we think that would be most beneficial for them to be in. A lot of times, when businesses don't reach out to economic development beforehand, they end up opening a business in an area where they may not be as successful. So, we, it's really important for us to, again, build that relationship with them, offer that additional service to them. We have other neighboring cities that offer a search engine on their websites where people can go in. It's not something that, that we collect as data, it's through like LoopNet or CoStar, which is a software service that we use to search for those available properties. And they're able to pull that data out, but again, they don't have that additional information of, you know, why they should select Burbank and not a different location. So, we've toyed around with that option in the past. We really haven't received a lot of comment from the business community that they're looking for that kind of a search engine, because again, we've been so responsive in, in speaking with them. So, it's definitely something we can do. But when we do reach out, when they do reach out to us, we do pull a, a report, and we send it to them with all of the it to them with all of the available spaces within the city. And then we follow up with them and talk to them about, did you find a location? How can we further assist you? And we kind of pull them in and put them into our database and follow through with them, which eventually helps them pick Burbank over different cities.
Well, thank you for that. And I did look at those engines you're referring to today and I did find some of their information, if possible, because in most cases, people don't know how to really search on our website. I mean, there's several different steps. You got to go and look for that. Should maybe we have an icon somewhere on the website? This is looking for business, looking for office space, click here and it takes you to your contact information. It takes you something that would stand out for the average person who may not know where to go because even though when they do call me and they ask me the question, I'm like, have you contacted our economic development? No, I don't know who to talk to. So something to make it easier for them and try to maybe, I know you guys are very creative, come up with that plan of how you gathered that information from the spaces. Maybe now they do have a need for us to help them, assist them to have that pool ready in case somebody needs it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Great suggestion. Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah?
Thank you for the presentation and for being very thorough. It was a very thorough presentation. I just want to make a point to our public speaker and our commenter. The city I mentioned was Pasadena and it's about $260,000 that they make in revenue from paid parking. And I do want to highlight that Glendale and Pasadena both have paid parking. It's very successful downtown areas and commercial districts. So does West Hollywood. There seems, and I think our team is looking at that, no correlation between paid parking and loss of economic development. So something to look at and I know it's in the works for us. So the other thing aside from our downtown growth here is I'm like shifting more towards the entertainment industry. It's kind of a question and a comment to y'all. In your presentation, you mentioned that we want to look at diversifying the types of media that we have, right? And I totally agree. That's very important. And have we looked at, you know, some spaces for ancillary technology, specifically things like the virtual production screen? I know that's very popular. A lot of our entertainment partners are saying that's the future of the industry. That would be something great to bring here. Have we looked at that?
It's not something that we've looked at yet, but we have, again, in our discussions with the entertainment industry, we know that AI and the LED screens are the next, you know, the next thing. That's evident with the MSG Dome that recently opened in Burbank, similar concept. And we actually learned that Monolith Studios elected to come to Burbank because of MSG. So again, now that correlation is also happening with the support industry coming here. So definitely something that we'll look at as a part of the Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Thank you so much. And I really would love to, as a comment, encourage staff to really look towards that LED and that virtual production screen. I really have heard our partners talking about it. I think it'd be a great way to start diversifying our media presence here and bring more jobs in that entertainment industry that by your presentation, wow, the revenue found there is great and it is a good chunk of Burbank that works in that sector. So thank you.
So I'll just add, Councilwoman Perez, it's Simone McFarlane with Community Development. And one of the things that we do when we go out and talk to all of these media companies, one of the questions we ask is what's the new technology? What's going on in your industry? And how can we, who's building that technology? And how can we find those companies so that we can try to recruit them to our area? And so that's something that we're very focused on with the AI and the screens. One of the things that we've been told is the screens are pretty easy to obtain. There's a lot of companies out there, but the hard part is getting the staff for that because it's such new technology and the software is constantly changing. And so to have the training facilities to do that, that would be something that we would look at in the new plan.
Thank you. That's great to know and probably like subsection of that would be great to be the host for those training facilities. Thank you for all the work you're doing and putting into this. It's really great stuff. I appreciate the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to staff. Great presentation. I just have a couple of topics that I wanted to cover, but I wanted to start with a response or to pose the question from our public commenter tonight. I know that there is a call by at least one to look at our pre-approved ADU floor plans. I know that a few months ago, we put in place a pilot program. I'm just curious, do we have any data? I don't know if Mr. Prescott or representative can speak to it, but has anyone applied for a pre-approved ADU floor plan since we piloted the program?
I think this is a little beyond the agendized item. This isn't really a housing item. I mean, the speaker could address it, but I think it's...
Mr. Vice Mayor, would you be able, would you be comfortable talking to Mr. Prescott offline?
Sure, I think the answer is zero, but I can confirm offline.
Thank you.
So rule number one they say about the law, don't ask a question you don't know the answer to. Okay, so I'm just going to go through the slides in the order that I saw them. So slide number seven, there was a really great display of some of the recent attraction efforts and the businesses that we brought in. This is going to be a mix of comments and questions. My comment is this, we have a lot of food service that we've brought in and I think that's terrific. In terms of developing the plan, I think that we, I think diversification is key. Food service is fantastic, but we really need to be looking at other industries, green tech, for example, and what we can do to recruit and retain businesses of that, of that nature. I also wanted to ask, so last, sorry, in 2021, we repurposed the subcommittee and we had, I think it was then Vice Mayor Talamontes and Councilmember Springer meet with a lot of stakeholder groups throughout the community as part of our economic recovery effort. Is the feedback that staff got from that process going to be included in the development of this new plan?
We can look at that as well, but we were hoping to have new focus groups and engage those same groups again because when we did engage with them during the economic recovery process, it was during the pandemic. So things have definitely shifted and changed. So we want that new perspective and we want to see where they think they're headed now. So we'll look at the old data, but we really want to get the fresh new data from those focus groups.
Okay, fantastic. For the record, I would just note that I'm referring to a staff report dated October 26, 2021. And I completely agree with re-engaging and having the conversation again, but there was some great nuggets of information in that report and good feedback that I think should at least be the starting point for the continued conversation. Going back to the slide, slide number eight, which was labeled retention. And I'm bringing this up because I noticed it and there was a quick comment on it, but I didn't see it flushed out in the materials sent home. My understanding is that the Chamber of Commerce had approached the city about some sort of expanded concierge program. And I see here on the slide, there's discussion of a welcome to Burbank program. Can you just give me a little bit more information on what's contemplated there?
Sure. So for the past year, we've been working with the Chamber of Commerce on creating a welcome to Burbank program. Basically what that is, is when we get the data from our building division on how many new business licenses there are in the city, we take that information and we've created a marketing piece with the chamber in collaboration with the chamber. And we send out a letter to the businesses welcoming them essentially to the city of Burbank, informing them of the resources that we have throughout the, through the chamber as well as the economic development resources in the city. The chamber, through their alliance group, also was offering new businesses with less than 25 employees, free membership to the Chamber of Commerce. So we floated that idea around. So basically it's just a welcome to Burbank email and then they get a certificate in the mail, the mayor, excuse me, in the mail that's signed by the mayor that welcomes them to Burbank. Again, just another touch point for us to be able to reach out to them. It also gives the Chamber of Commerce an opportunity to reach back out to them in the future to say, did you receive our letter? We want you to join the chamber. So it's really a combined effort.
The other thing that I'll add is that the chamber changed the way that they do their ribbon cuttings. They were charging for ribbon cuttings and now those ribbon cuttings, when they become a member, they do those. And another thing that we've changed is the city used to do some of those ribbon cuttings and the chamber used to do some ribbon cuttings. And we now give all those ribbon cuttings to the chamber because it's a great opportunity for them to recruit new members.
Perfect, thank you. And speaking of the chamber, when you're doing the outreach, I know that many businesses, but not all, are members of the Burbank Chamber of Commerce. So what's our plan for engaging with businesses that are not currently chamber members?
So we have a database of about 6,500 emails that we send out to businesses. One of the benefits of COVID was actually creating that database of information, of emails to be able to send out that information. So we have various ways of doing that. So we have the 6,500 emails, we have our chamber, we send out the information to the chamber for their membership, we send it out to our downtown Burbank, we send it out to the Magnolia Park Merchants Association. So we do our very best to try to reach as many businesses as possible. We also again, have a lot of connections and relationships with a lot of businesses that we do know through our business visits that we meet with them. So we can't reach everyone, but we're doing as best as we can to get the word out.
Okay, thank you. I do have one question related to slide number 34 and 35. Now, this does touch on the issue of housing, but I'm going to try to word the question in a way that is relevant to the market forces at play. So in slide 34, here we go, let's see if I can do it. Slide 34 describes the increase in rent rates for different units of housing, studio bedrooms, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units. My question is, do we have, and then on, I should mention on slide 35, there is a comparison of that increase in housing costs to what's described as an increase in average household income. Do we have, can we get this granular with the data? Do we know, for example, of those households who live in a rental setting as opposed to a homeownership setting, what are their wages looking like? Are they keeping pace, for example, with rent increases? Do we have that data is the question?
No, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, we don't have that data. The information that we gave you today is the lowest granular area that we go to.
Okay, thank you. I only had one other point of inquiry, Mr. Mayor. So in attachment one to the staff report, there was a reference to a targeted jobs incentive fund in Miami-Dade County. And I recall, because I brought that up last year, I believe with every item that we ask for, there's a city manager tracking number that's associated with it. What was the date of commencement for that tracking number?
I don't know. We'd have to go look at the tracking list.
Okay. So this is more of a, just a comment and feedback to staff. I think that the plan that's being developed or will be presented to council is really exciting. I look forward to working with my colleague, Councilmember Takahashi, to help guide that. The reason I brought it, I brought up the TGIF, sorry, TJIF, is that it's really critical that when we're talking about economic development, we are targeting the industries in which we really want to grow to diversify. We don't have enough, we don't want to have another Lockheed situation. We want to make sure that our economy is resilient and it's like a four-legged stool. No matter what happens, our industries are going to be fine. The reason I bring all this up is that by my recollection, that item was first referenced about a year ago, started actually with an email to the then-mayor, Jess Talamontes, and the city manager. So I just wanted to say it's through no fault of staff, but I am a little disappointed that it's a year later and we're only getting to talk about this now. I understand the answer is going to be, well, we'll talk about that in development of the plan, but I really think we need to be a little bit more nimble and move quicker on this issue because it is really critical. Thank you.
I only have two comments. One, I firmly believe adaptive reuse is going to be our best solution for the vacant retail space. And if possible, instead of doing an entire zone text amendment, if we could just bring back a CUP process, something simple.
That's still a zone text amendment.
It would, okay.
Yeah.
Then there you go. Okay. All right. Never mind. But whatever we can bring back so that we know that these folks can apply for it and we can start pushing that out there for whatever opportunities we have. And then my last...
Can I just add to that, Mayor? So it's, it sounds easy, but it's not. So we've been talking to some of the developers and we've, Mary and I were at a meeting last week talking about adaptive reuse specifically for downtown LA. And they were talking about some of the buildings and how hard it is to change those buildings out from an office setting to a, say, residential setting because they just weren't built that way. The water is different. There's not the same amount of pressure that you would need for water, for housing. The air conditioning, the air cons are different, set up differently. There are a lot of different things that have to happen to create that adaptive reuse. And the one takeaway that I think we came back with was that the values of the property have to go down low enough for somebody to want to invest enough money into the property to reuse that, adaptively reuse it and rent it again. And so a lot of times it's not, it's not going to pencil for a while is what we were told unless it's something like a bankruptcy issue. So some of those bankruptcies that went through LA, those buildings will be sold at pennies on the dollar, right? And so at that point then, it may become feasible to invest those dollars to do the adapted reuse requirements.
Would adaptive reuse, I'm not, I mean, I understand the residential part of it, but even the commercial that's zoned for that, we would be able to change the commercial use? That's not like from light industrial to light commercial or say, you know, office space to doctor's office kind of stuff?
Sure. The best solution for that would be probably, the easiest would be to do adaptive reuse of an existing office building and convert it to medical because the office component is the same. It's the parking that's a little different. So that would, we would have to look and see, work with planning to see what that would entail. Again, we can, we can do that during the Economic Development Strategic Plan. That'll be an area of focus for us in the plan.
Yeah, obviously residential would be my key, but yeah, anything that we can switch over like that. Yes, any comments on that?
And that's really what I was referring to earlier. I understand housing is going to be a more complicated, but if we can help place new businesses into an existing business, but change the actual use of what the required parking and other use, that will be something to keep us afloat and keep that building occupied.
So I would say to the mayor's question that we have a procedure that would allow that to happen. And there was some interest during the last recession in one of our media district buildings. They could accomplish that through a plan development as long as it was, could be accomplished under the general plan. There's always the plan development procedure that would change the zoning to the plan development. Short of going in and revising the whole code, there is a procedure that could be used today to start that process.
Okay. And it wouldn't have to be a full teardown. It just goes with whatever's sitting there.
Well, they still have to meet, so there's different occupancy requirements. And to Ms. McFarlane's point, there are different occupancies, there are different standards. And at the, at the very basic mechanical level for a structure, a change could require, you know, substantial modifications. And that would be based upon the occupancy and the building code adopted by the city. So, so it's really up to the developer to see if it would be worth it and whether it would require a discount of the land. It sounds like from this very strong report, we're not there yet, but at least from a zoning perspective, there is a procedure on the books that could be used. So it's not, it's not that it can't be accomplished from a land use perspective. It may be more challenging from a mechanical perspective.
All right. Okay, thank you. My last comment, slide number 10, if you could pull up slide number 10 just real quick.
We're missing Viviana.
That's all right.
So...
You know what? It's fine. That's fine. Oh, hello, Viviana. Ms. Garzone, if you could, slide number 10. I do want to see the Wonder Woman statue. No, you passed it. You passed it way back. Go back, back, back. This is way too much. You're not going to appreciate this at all now. See, it's not even worth it now. Feel like I didn't want to do it now. My question is, why did you crop me out of the photo? I'm right on the right. That's, okay. See, totally wasn't worth it. All right. This is a noted file. If we could, yes, that was my whole comment. It was totally not worth it at that point.
I got, I got one, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, what do you got?
Actual item of business here. No, no, I, on the issue, the film industry tax credit that's been championed in the legislature, I believe that's up for discussion for extension. Mr. City Manager, it would seem to me that would fit within the legislative platform. Have we put forward a comment letter on that?
No, but that's something that we will definitely look at and if we can, we'll get a letter out to Sacramento.
Do you, do you need further direction from council or?
It's in the platform. I think that's pretty solid. So we could just craft it and get some signatures and be done with it.
Great, thank you.
Cool. Not in file? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have a discussion of a... We have a discussion of a citywide community survey regarding commercial cannabis activity in the city of Burbank. Mr. Daniel Amaya, administrative analyst in the Public Information Office, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, Burbank City Council members. My name is Daniel Amaya, administrative analyst with the Public Information Office. Tonight I'll be presenting a first step report on the discussion of a citywide community survey regarding commercial cannabis activity in the city of Burbank as requested by Mayor Anthony at the January tenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. The city of Burbank currently has a codified prohibition on all commercial cannabis/marijuana activities within city limits, meaning cannabis businesses of any type are not allowed in Burbank. The city council adopted an ordinance on January twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen to codify this prohibition in response to the state's passing of the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, where the city was required to expressly identify this prohibition to avoid forfeiting local control of certain cannabis activities to the state. The city council also adopted an ordinance to amend the Burbank Municipal Code on November fourteenth, twenty seventeen, following the state's approval of the Adult Use of Marijuana Act and the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. This was done to keep our municipal code consistent and relevant with changes to state law while upholding the city's prohibition on commercial cannabis activity. City codes relating to commercial cannabis activity have remained unchanged since November of twenty seventeen. Tonight's discussion is surrounding the potential distribution of a citywide community survey on cannabis sales in Burbank. There are various types of commercial cannabis activities such as retail storefront, retail delivery, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, and distribution of cannabis or cannabis products. Incorporated cities such as Burbank can decide which types they permit or prohibit within their city. If council chooses to distribute a citywide survey, the council may choose to focus on specific types of commercial activities with the intent of limiting cannabis activity types in the city. This would result in a shorter, less detailed survey that is likely lower in cost. The council may also choose to distribute a survey that gauges community interest on potentially permitting all commercial cannabis activities, resulting in a longer and more comprehensive survey that is likely higher in cost. Another important consideration is the option to impose local cannabis taxes. Should a local cannabis tax be implemented further down the line, it will be in addition to a fifteen percent state tax on cannabis and cannabis products and the city's ten point two five percent sales tax. With commercial cannabis activity being illegal for the entirety of Burbank's history, city council may choose to request more information and consider distributing a citywide survey and use those results to make informed future decisions in regard to legalizing and regulating commercial cannabis operations in the city. Council may also choose to note and file this first step report. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Is there any questions of staff? It's a very light report. Obviously, there's not much to it yet. There's a lot we don't know. Yeah, it's a first step. Thank you. I brought this originally agendized because I would like to find out more. And in finding out more, I think we should find out from our constituents what they want. There's been discussions back and forth about what the community is in favor of. I mean, we can go back and look at some of the votes just here in Burbank when cannabis was on the statewide ballot, but then there's also comments about locally. I'd be comfortable with the more in-depth report. I'd like to hear from my council members.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, and I agree with you that it's important to hear from our community and to see what they want and what we should be looking at. I do have some concerns and the concerns is not about the actual subject. It's more of all these type of assignments and surveys that we're putting on staff right now to do since it's not something urgent that we need to take a look at. Last week, I know the city attorney made us all very aware of the amount of work and assignments that we have given to staff in relating to the gun ordinance, districting, single use of plastic, rancher master plan, San Fernando one-way closure. And I go on, I have a long list, and we were all told that staff is working to full capacity of trying to get all these projects that we have. I know the vice mayor wanted to push some things earlier on regarding to the gun control. And I heard the city attorney loud and clear. I know the PIO office will be handling the survey. So my point that I'm making is if we can push this down further possible to allow for some of these other important things that we have been discussing at the council to come back first, let's take a look at gun ordinance or the districting. I'm just concerned that with putting all these things out there for the community and now, you know, the districting is causing a little bit of confusion for a lot of people as well and concerns. And then now we're going to go out with another survey. And so if we can agree to maybe push it down, I'm not opposing to going out and conducting a survey. I'm just opposing to the timing of adding all this on to everyone.
Let me, I appreciate that. Mr. Amaya, I know PIO would run this report to come back. The survey, however, we would farm that out to a specialist who does that specifically, right?
Correct. We would essentially contract the survey to a, experts in the field, essentially research firms that have done this for years that have worked with multiple municipalities on specific topics such as cannabis legalization at the municipal level. So we wouldn't be conducting the survey ourselves. We would do, we would do the legwork to essentially get the ball rolling on giving them the opportunity to distribute the survey and work with them on that level.
Let's talk about timing. We're doing the districts now. When is that window that we're working on? We could just get?
We're booked through July, through the end of July on that. And then there's a phase two that the council is very interested, at least originally. We'll see when we get there, but I'm anticipating we will be launching into evaluation of additional options after that.
If, oh, sorry.
If I could also say budget season's right around the corner, so a lot of your council time will be related to budget. And then right after that, we have three specific plans that are all right there in the queue plus the rancher specific plan, which is right there as well.
So come back to Mr. Amaya, if we were to send this out to a third-party contractor, what's the timing on that? What are you looking at if we were to send this out?
It ultimately, it ultimately depends on what the council wants to do. We can take our previous experiences in working with research firms and do a sole source, or we can go through the RFP process where we receive a bunch of proposals and we ultimately make this, the decision from that. So it's ultimately at the council discretion. I don't really have an actual timeline being that this is a first step report, but I'm happy to bring more information if there is a majority for a second step report.
Well, yes.
I just have a question to piggyback off of that. There is a thirty to fifty thousand dollar estimated cost with this, and that's coming out of the general fund. Would that be for the contractor essentially?
Yeah, surveys are not cheap, as we've learned in the past. We've received plenty of proposals from multiple firms and the estimation that's actually on the staff report is based on those proposals that we've received in the past.
Thank you for that. And, you know, to, to both of your points, I really appreciate the mayor's leadership on this. It's something that a lot of cities are looking at, a lot of our neighbors. And, and I'd love to hear in the next few months how it goes for them. That being said, I agree with Councilmember Mullins that we have a lot of priorities on the table right now. And, you know, like it or not, when this would be to come back, we would still have to, at some point in the process, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, involve the city attorney's office, right?
Yes, I mean, as well, the Public Information Office, which I believe has several vacancies, is heavily involved in the districting. And they have to, you know, depending upon the choice, actually, our procurement code presumes competitive solicitation unless it's waived. They would have to write the RFP, go through the vetting process, stand before this council for their recommendation on who to pick, and then commission and oversee that work as well. So it's, it's not like they can just hand it to a consultant and not be involved.
Right. And so I'll, go ahead.
To finish my thought, that being said, you know, I just want to put this out there to my colleagues. Before we start regulating a new industry, I would say we have a lot of things on the table. Let's finish regulating some of the things we're working on, the gun control issue. It's huge. We've heard our community loud and clear that is a priority for them. And I think we should, you know, stick on that, on housing. There's a lot of priorities at the table right now. So I would be comfortable with revisiting this in, say, twelve months.
Here's my only concern with that. And I understand that it's, you know, a big ticket item. If we delay twelve months, we'll miss the opportunity to put something on the ballot for twenty twenty-four on a tax. And the reason why I lead with that is because there's a lot of revenue in this industry that's going to surrounding cities. And for me, that price tag could be recouped within, within two years. Whereas if we wait, we'll have to wait for another ballot time, which would be twenty twenty-six. And so I feel it would be, it would behoove us to try to get this done sooner rather than later and, and instead miss that window for twenty twenty-four and then have to circle back around again and wait another two years.
So of course, I'm not aware, or I was not aware, this is what your train of thoughts were that regarding tax. But are you talking about taxing the businesses? Does that have to go on the, on the ballot?
Mr. City Attorney, if we, we can't collect tax revenue until we do a ballot measure. Is that correct, first cannabis?
Well, the tax is subject to vote. Keep in mind, this is a first step report. So you're, you're not actually deciding tonight whether to commence a survey to start X date. This was just PIO's office bringing you a first step report, whether to commence. They could bring back a second step report to talk about the process, to talk about. You already have a charter review committee that's kind of waiting to see what happens with the districting. And then they have a survey actually to send out on some topics that they brought to you, you know, last year. So there were, there's already several items that are going to come forward for probably charter amendment at a minimum by next March. So, so some of those windows, council could give direction for a second step report because staff wasn't really prepared to talk about how this effort would synchronize with future elections tonight.
Well, if it's okay with, with council, I think I would like to see at least a second step report before we delay it and just see the timing. Let PIO figure out if they can squeeze something in between the districting, figure out what the process is for the taxes, just very basic stuff that we haven't talked about tonight, if that's okay. And then at that time, we can look at our timing. We'll see how the districting is moving forward and just go from there. And if we have to delay it till the next election cycle, then we can delay it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I understand there is the concern over timing and elections, but bringing back is still puts that impact on what we have just mentioned about the gun ordinance and then districting. The districting by itself is a really heavy work to be carried by the city attorney and by staff. And we need to, in my opinion, we need to focus on what's really important, meaning what are we going to look at our charter for the changes for districting? This is very important to the community and to us as well because it's going to impact our whole entire election. The gun control last week with parents here crying and needing some action from us to take. We need to really allow staff to focus a hundred percent and for us to focus a hundred percent. I just, if this was an urgent matter like a gun control issue or something that is happening that's going to impact our community, I would be with you standing there saying, let's, let's jump on it, staff, take the time to do it. I just don't see it that it's an urgent matter because honestly, there was no emails pleading to open stores here. We're looking at sales tax, but, you know, we don't really know how much revenue we're going to get out of the, the sales of marijuana. We need to have statistics. We need to look at crime. We need to take a look at a lot of slew of things. And I know the survey will do that, but it's also adding additional responsibilities and work. And I'm not only focusing on staff, I'm also focusing on the community, the confusion that's already out there about the charter changes that's making everyone so concerned. And what does that mean? How are you going to change our charter? If we do the survey and we come back with answers, staff comes back with answers, what's going to happen is that now you're built expectation. What are you going to do with that survey?
Well, I would say I'm not ready to go for a survey just yet. I think that should definitely be weighted on. All I'm asking is for a second step so we can look at what the survey is going to tackle, timing, just sort of flush this out, that's all. I think, I think a second step report should be fine. And then we can figure out timing afterwards. That's my, that's my only concern. I don't want to spend thirty to forty thousand right now.
Yeah. Mayor, thank you. Okay, so the tax thing is a new piece of information for me, so I'm trying to digest it a little bit. I was doing a quick Google search to see if I could get any information on what other cities have earned in their taxes and weigh against the cost of implementing the program because it's going to be a cost not just to do the study, but also then to implement a program and adjust things. So I don't have that data in front of me, so it's difficult to know if that's even worth fighting for. And if, and if the city, just as an example, if the city were to cap the number of cannabis stores, let's say, for example, our city said, yeah, we don't mind having cannabis stores, but we only want to have five, similarly to how we're doing maybe potentially gun stores. Well, that's only five businesses we're taxing, so that's not going to be a huge amount of revenue. So my thought is like, we're not LA, we're not a large city, so having a, we're not going to have a huge market for cannabis, even if we do end up allowing it, that might be worth having, I mean, the taxes revenue that come in from that may not be worth this whole, like, for that purpose alone. And that might be an added benefit of having, like, the taxes on it and added benefit for the income. But I don't, I'm not quite convinced that that's the reason why we should be pursuing this at this point.
Is it, is it possible to bring that information back if we go to a second step? Can we research what other cities are doing and like, figure out how many stores would be affected?
If that's what the council would like to see on the second step report, we can certainly bring that back.
Would that be, I mean, I'd like to know this information too. And then we can talk about the taxes and timing and how fast it would need to go. And if, if we're way outside the window, then we can just postpone it. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. The council could certainly direct us to, instead of note and file, do more work on this. I will tell you though, that, you know, we did the goal-setting session. That's not one of the goal settings. So I'm at a difficult spot to try to defend trying to get all the goal-setting stuff done and then adding something that could really become a big mountain to move.
Okay, all right.
Just, just add one more thing and to tack off something that Councilmember Takahashi mentioned. In, in cities where they have done things like one, you know, like five cannabis stores, there are lawsuits that have come with that, which would also tack on more, you know, more work for our city attorney's office. So I, I hear you in the lost revenue and the potential lost revenue, but we don't know where that is right now. And I'd love to, I would really love to see what happens in some of the other cities and then come, come back and take a look at this. And maybe it isn't something that we put on twenty twenty-four ballot. Maybe it is something that goes on the next ballot, right? But I just think we are tapped out.
Would you be comfortable maybe come back the first of the year and take a look at this again? Is that enough time? Or, I mean, how do you guys feel about this?
I would like to see some of these outstanding projects that were in assignments that being looked at, including the districting and the budget and all this out of our way. And the city manager, they have a running agenda. They can always come back. I would maybe revisit beginning of the year or right after we understand what's happening with the districting process.
May I add some more, please? So I don't, I don't really have an objection to the discussion of cannabis stores. So it's, it's not about the morality or about any of that. But I did attend a, at least for me, I did attend a webinar about implementing cannabis, retail and other kinds of businesses, implementing a policy for city. And at that webinar, the mayor of Santa Rosa was there. And, and mayor described, he was very enthusiastic about it. However, during the description of the process, it was involved. There was a lot to go on. And I think that, based on what I heard from him, that even in the best case scenario, looking at like, like our city manager said, moving a mountain. And I don't know if right now is the time to move that mountain. And I'm not saying that we should never move it. I'm not saying that we should not. And I'm not saying that we should never move it. I'm not saying that we should not think about it. But my, my hope is that we will organically know it's the right time. And it just doesn't feel like the right time for us right now, for this. But I, I do think it's coming. I do think eventually we'll probably get there, but right now I don't think it's specifically the right time. Like Santa Rosa, one of the reasons why they were so urgent about it and other cities might be is because there's actually a really serious problem with cannabis, street cannabis being laced with fentanyl and other kinds of really dangerous drugs. And so in cities that that's a case, having legalized cannabis stores makes it easier to access regulated cannabis. So I could see the level of urgency there because they want to make sure that it's accessible for their community. So they have less of a street cannabis issue. Well, because we are in the LA county in the heart of it and that we have a lot of cities around us that do have that available. And our city does not necessarily, I mean, we all, every city has some level of issue, but our city doesn't have a high level of issue. That adding cannabis stores to our city is not going to significantly reduce that particular problem. And so I think for us, just looking at the urgency of it, it's not an urgent thing that so many other things are so much more urgent. However, I do want to mention one thing, Mr. Mayor, that I think is worth noting. One of the assumptions that I think the community has about cannabis, I had, that I thought was the case, but it's not. Was that it's okay to deliver cannabis into Burbank. But actually it's not okay to deliver cannabis. It's, it's on our code. And I can give you the links that we are not legally allowed to, to deliver cannabis into our city. And that's something I think we can probably tackle really quickly is to, because we already assumed that was the case. And so to just to, to make the code match what we're okay with and that maybe just make that one part so that we can get deliveries. So that we can have access to it in our community.
Real quick, Mr. City Attorney, we don't enforce that from what I understand. Is that correct?
Well, I, I believe our ordinance allows deliveries to patients because this was actually written before the legalization of recreational use from care providers. So it was written out of a concern from the council at that time to make sure that for patients for which there's a therapeutic benefit, they were able to get that from their, whatever the type of provider is that, that makes those referrals. So that's allowed. I'm not aware that we've had any enforcement issues. The enforcement issues that we've had over the last couple of years have been illegal grow houses, which, which are illegal.
My last question, if theoretically we were to go to the March ballot for redistricting, would that process have to be done before the first of the year?
Which process?
Of, of getting a, a council approval and writing a ballot measure and getting it ready for the March ballot of next year.
For the redistricting?
For redistricting. Would we have to be done and finally, there's a deadline?
No, no, that, that, well, first of all, that's a completely different subject.
Right. The reason I ask.
So we're not talking about districting tonight.
Right. Okay.
And that's dependent upon the process.
Right. I'll ask in a different way then. Would you feel that the city attorney's office would have a lighter load at the beginning of next year?
So this really goes to the point that the city manager made. Counsel had a very thorough discussion of goals and a very comprehensive set of priorities for which this subject was not among them. There are many matters that we haven't yet gotten to. Counsel just approved the receipt of 1.8 million dollars of home funds to build a project for which we're still working on two different alternative sites and need to engage architects. So there are, you know, Councilmember Mullins went through a brief list, but all of the council members also have committee assignments. And, and there is a, the city's total budget is over 800 million dollars. And the staff are on a daily basis occupied in moving those forward. All of which are in line, either services to residents or your other priority goals like housing and homelessness and all of those. So the, the, the vote to move this ahead is really merging it ahead of all those items. So it's really hard to say. It's not one thing. It's not just the districting. The districting, we're working within a safe harbor provision of the elections code. The firearms, we're working to really try, we're, we're under a moratorium, but we're also have direction to bring back low hanging fruit as quickly as possible. And, and so it's, it's really a complicated work program. The redistricting is 13 meetings between now and July from at least three different departments and two different consulting firms. The firearms is I think four or five different departments, working on many different efforts. So it's, it's, it's a little more complicated than just one thing or another. It's, it's really, there is, there is really a, a comprehensive set of projects that are moving forward as staff are available.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to weigh in. So I don't really have any questions for staff, but thank you for the presentation. I do have some comments, Mr. Mayor. Just sitting here, listening to my colleagues, a couple of takeaways. I, I don't see, given the workload that we have placed on staff, how we could get it to the ballot next year. I mean, just realistically, I don't see that at this juncture. But I also understand, understand your point, going back to the last agenda item about not making progress on something. And so I'd like to throw out a solution that I think is reasonable and would not be a burden on staff. And frankly, it's something that a lot of our commissions make regular use of. My understanding is that we could have an ad hoc, and I, I'm going to keep it really narrowly tailored to the subject matter, which is an approach for community outreach to get the community's input on this issue. I don't see why the council couldn't create an ad hoc subcommittee for a definitive period of time, say, report back to council by the end of the year to explore what kinds of questions that we would want to ask of the community and what kinds of information that we would want to get if down the road we were to do a survey. If we did that, any two council members could form the ad hoc subcommittee. And I don't think that it would have a great deal, if any, of staff resources or time. I think the two council members could brainstorm and bring that back. And obviously the ball couldn't advance unless and until a council majority presented with that proposal or information were to vote to do it. So I think maybe that's a way to thread the needle here. You can move the subject forward, but in a way that does not drain staff resources or time.
Councilmember Perez?
I have a question to follow up on that. And, and to everyone's point, I agree, this is an important subject we need to talk about and definitely not against it. But when is the question? And factoring money, staff time, et cetera. Would creating an ad hoc committee take up significant staff time? That question is to staff.
It's a question to the members of the committee. So the council members are adept at, at undertaking their own research. You review thousand page packets regularly on a weekly basis. So it's, it's really a question of how much demand the council members wish to place. The, the, the sources that staff uses to collect the information from other municipalities are available to the council members as they are of staff. And of course, as you all know, staff is available whenever a council member calls to provide some assistance. So provided it's narrowly tailored and fits within tonight's agenda item, that does not immediately tax staff. But for staff to come back with a second step report before council does anything is immediate load kind of on staff in which we then need to triage council's priorities.
Mr. Mayor, if I can follow up to that, Mr. City Attorney, please correct me if I'm, if anything I'm about to say is, is not accurate. Now, to that point, if two council members on this body were to decide to take the lead and say, we really want to use open source information and study that issue, I think it could be done without any staff resources or time. It could be done. Granted, I mean, no action would be taken by the council unless and until it's reported back. That'd be number one. And the other thing about an ad hoc committee, provided that it exists for a definitive period of time and has a very specific purpose, it is not subject to the Brown Act. So there are no publicly noticed meetings. I mean, two council members could regularly engage on that subject in the city manager conference room, for example, and, and do that. I think that if you want to move it forward, that would be my suggestion is one way to make progress.
Yeah. Okay.
Sure. Happy to look into it.
Do you want to make a motion to?
Before we make a motion. Ad hoc committee, I, I think, Mr. Vice Mayor, you're really trying to help bring this to a closure. And assisting the mayor in fulfilling what he would like to see in, in getting that study. I, I don't want to be blindsided to know that, what does it mean by ad hoc committee? Who are we inviting to the table? What type of questions? I know there is a reason we go out and conduct a professional, not that any of you here are not professional. But we do conduct a professional survey. We go out to other cities. We, we, the survey will dig into how they implemented, when they implemented, the cost. Again, I don't see what the urgency is to go and move forward with this when we already have a long list. And you're right, Mr. City Attorney, I didn't, I stopped at, you know, three or four of my list here. Setting the expectations and saying we have an ad hoc committee because we're looking in this matter is also going to create the urgency from the public to say, well, what have you done? When is this coming back? When is it on the agenda? Are you going to implement it? What stores? What are we going to do? Even after the council developed the ad hoc committee, I guarantee you, we still want to go out and conduct a survey. So that's still going to happen because the ad hoc committee is not doing a survey. They're just talking to some residents. They're, you know, hey, what is your feedback? How do you feel about having, you know, the cannabis shops here in Burbank? And would you want a storefront? What do you want? It's still going to require that we're going to go out and conduct a survey. I absolutely see no urgency. I have no emails. None of us have received an email. Nobody came here tonight to say, please, please, I beg you to open a shop. And therefore I don't see any reason why should we take on this additional responsibility in making it happen now for the staff. And then also it's, as the city managers say, we never talked about it as part of our, our goals. We have set goals to, to move forward and we, we gave them the baton to go out and carry those goals and make sure they make it happen. Why are we varying from our goals? Why are we pushing this matter tonight? I'm not really sure. And I am not supportive at all of ad hoc or going out. I am actually pleading with all of you to allow the process, allow us to go ahead and complete what we've assigned them to do already. And the community not to confuse them with all these things are going on. I cannot have another mother standing here crying because her son or daughter is that she's worried about the guns at school. We need to finish with a lot of these items first. I'm done saying, I think I made my statement and you guys know how I feel about it. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We sure do, Councilmember Mullins. And I think there's a little bit of confusion that I sensed from, from some of your statements. So I wanted to clarify. An ad hoc subcommittee, at least the way that I would envision it and the motion that I would make, would have a very definitive purpose. And that would not be to conduct the community outreach or engagement. It would be in place of staff time and energy, putting together a second step report that would say, well, if we were to go and, and do outreach, what questions would we ask to the community? Instead of having staff work on that, I think two council members could say, if hypothetically, a year or two years or five years down the line, the council were to engage in that outreach, the questions we would want to know is, what are your thoughts on commercial cannabis? Do you oppose it? Would you support it? Would you support onsite consumption or carry out of product only? Delving into the details and that would be done without any staff time, energy or resources. What would happen, at least from what I've seen on some of our commissions, is that the two commissioners that forms a subcommittee, say sometime in 2024, would report back in the course of our regular meeting, or I guess they could write a memo. And they would say, the two of us have talked about it. Maybe they've, well, it probably would just be the two council members. And they would just say that in discussing it, we would propose that if and when a survey went out, these are the kinds of questions that we would want to ask the public and what we'd want to know. At that time, the entire council could decide, yes, we think it's a good use of staff time, energy and resources now. Or they could similarly say, no, now is not the time. So it would have no drain on staff energy or resources if it's done in this narrowly tailored way. And the community can certainly share their input, but the idea is not to have a subcommittee that's doing the outreach. It's to ask the, the ultimate questions before you even get to that point. What are we going to ask the community? What is the outreach? The other thing I would say is that I have the benefit of been, having been on this council for two years prior to our three newest colleagues. And I have had emails and had conversations with folks on both sides of the issue. Many who do not want to see commercial cannabis at all in the city of Burbank and those that do. So look, I, I don't really, it wasn't my agenda item. I don't really have a strong preference in place of it either way. But I do think that there is a mechanism to move the item forward. If the only concern is staff time, energy and resources, I don't think that that is a deal breaker. If there are other more moral concerns or other concerns at issue here, then I think maybe that, you know, that's a different conversation.
If it's, if it's okay, I'd like to answer the vice mayor. I think I, I was definitely not confused by the ad hoc committee. And what you have described, Mr. Vice Mayor, is what the survey will be, the people who will be conducting the survey, this is what they will design, the type of questions that will go out with some directions that will provide to staff, assuming it comes back on second step. And that, that's the direction we're giving staff. Do we want to see storefront? Do we want to see delivery? And so I understand that they will take that to whoever they're going to hire and they're going to develop those questions because that's what they do for a living. So my issue, again, I bring it over and over. It's not just about staff. It's also about the community. I am sure, just like I have, I had a ton of phone calls, a lot of emails concerning the districting. And why are we doing it? Who approved it? And why do you need to approve it? The community is getting now aware of what we're doing with districting and changing our charter. And there's a big chaos and concern to know what's going on. We need to let that take place first. We need to let the gun control take place. The, the Rancho folks that were here a week ago. I don't understand why we're trying to push something to happen when it's not urgent and we don't need to do it.
An ad hoc committee wouldn't be public at all. So it would be two council members working behind the scenes, looking up, doing the Google searches of how the taxes work and what it would cost and what other cities are doing. I mean, you know, something that we can't do in a quick five minute setup. So if it's okay, I'd, I'd entertain a motion.
I think it'd be better to hear from our colleagues.
Sure.
I'll keep it short and sweet. My bottom line is staff's time and diverting staff from what they're working on to Councilmember Mullins's point. If two of us want to embark on that journey, by all means, have, have fun and come back to us with a memo. I think it's, it's finding it a different way than, than using those staff resources. I think then we can make the decision if we'd like to move forward with it or not. But I, I'm not in, in the business of like stopping my colleagues from doing that if they'd like to.
Yeah. And to that point, I think that the way that it sounds like you're, you would be approaching this ad hoc committee is an opportunity to semi-formalize your own process of looking into it more deeply. And that's something, as Councilmember Perez said, that any of us could do on any topic. But it's become, okay, the two of you are going to, or for example, if the two of you are on the subcommittee, you're the two who are going to focus on cannabis stores. And then we, you know, we're not going to talk to you about it. You're going to be on your own, you know, kind of working on that. And I think that's, that kind of sort of happens organically anyway, without a formalization. Where a couple of us might be very interested in a topic like Councilmember Perez and I might talk about, because we're both a sustainability liaison. So, so she and I may be talking about sustainability issues. And then one of the other council members will say, oh, have you been talking about that? Oh, yeah, Ms. Perez and I have been already. So that's already kind of happening. So this sounds to me like this is an issue that's very important to you. And that Vice Mayor is willing to partner with you on that. And I don't see any problem necessarily with that, as long as it doesn't come with any super expectations of what's going to happen next. And that's just, this is just the next step. And then from there on, we'll see where it goes. And I'm okay with that.
If you two want to sit down and Google what you need to do, go ahead and Google. For now, I believe that we should just carry on and note and file until you come back to us with something else.
Do we need to make a motion to make a subcommittee or?
I, I just want to be clear. So if this happens, there is no public outreach during this part. There is no staff involvement.
No second step yet. We'll come back with a memo.
Mr. Mayor, I'll try to make my motion as clear as I can for the benefit of the public and everyone involved. So the motion would be as follows, to create an ad hoc subcommittee of the Burbank City Council comprised of Mayor Anthony and myself. The ad hoc would exist for no more than 12 months or one year period in time. And before the end of that period, the subcommittee, which would not be staffed, so there would be no staff assignment or resources dedicated to the subcommittee, would be responsible for reporting back to the council, I'll say preferably in written form, but verbal report would probably be okay as well. And the scope of the committee's work would be to look at if and when the council were to explore the issue of commercial cannabis. to explore the issue of commercial cannabis, what would be the questions that we would want to pose to the community at large?
I'd like, I, I will second that. And I would ask for an amendment to also look at the mechanisms for taxing commercial cannabis as well as the timeline for such a tax.
Well, the only concern I have with that is, is that, Mr. City Attorney, I'll defer to you, is that beyond the scope of tonight's agenda item? Just because I was looking at the issue, the issue tonight is really community outreach. So I don't want to.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I will, I will pull back the amendment.
However, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that if we independently do the research on our own, talk with each other. But I also want the community to know that no decisions are being made by the subcommittee, and decisions would only be made if and when it comes back to the full council for a public consideration.
Fair enough. So it's just a straight second, no amendment.
So, so just to be clear, so this is a note and file of staff, staff's report, and staff is to not take any further action on this subject.
Yes.
Until the item is brought back with a subcommittee, an ad hoc subcommittee report to the council. Well, right, I'm just, I'm, I'm putting a little bit of dressing around what I believe is a very clear motion, but just framing it in terms of what staff's. It's a note and file, it's formation of a subcommittee, note and file of staff's report, and staff is to wait until the subcommittee reports back, preferably in writing, on the matters referenced by Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Great. And that's my second for that. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mullins? Yes. Councilmember Perez?
Yes, enthusiastically vote to give my colleagues more work.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
I think I earned my keep tonight, yes.
And Mayor Anthony.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, everyone.
Final report this evening, continued discussion on the invocation period at city council meetings. Mrs. Viviana Garzone, Administrative Analyst, City Manager's Office, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and members of the city council, Viviana Garzone, Administrative Analyst in the City Manager's Office. And look at that, 9:30.
Okay, all right.
We're doing good.
Doing okay, doing okay.
All right. So I am here tonight to present the second step staff report on the invocation period at city council meetings. The invocation period has been a part of the Burbank City Council meetings since 1953. In partnership with the Burbank Ministry Association and the City Manager's Office, the process has been successful over the years. At the January 24th, 2023 meeting, I presented the first step staff report with details on the history of the invocation period, the process by the Burbank Ministry Association to coordinate the speakers at each council meeting, and data on what other cities do in regard to the invocation period. Out of 95 cities that replied to our January survey, 51% have an invocation period on their council agendas, and 38% do not have an invocation period. After discussion, council directed staff to return with the option of a moment of reflection and a draft script for council consideration. Included in the staff report before you is attachment one, and this is a draft script for the moment of reflection for your review. If council chooses to direct staff to update the city council meeting agenda with the removal of the invocation period and approve the script for the moment of reflection, the change will be effective at the next council meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, April 11th. In addition, council should decide who will be reading the script at the council meetings. During our research, we learned that some councils read the script on a rotating schedule while other councils have the mayor read the script at every meeting. Council can also choose to note and file this report or just remove the invocation period completely from the council agenda. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment in person on this?
No, we do not.
No? Okay. I'll open it up to my council, yeah?
I just want to thank staff for the work on this. Thank you for bringing it back and, and for indulging us last time we talked about this for a long time. Given that we talked about this for a long time last time, I have no problem with what staff has brought before us. I think the moment of reflection sounds great. And I, if my colleagues have no issue, I'd be willing to make a motion to, to have our moment of reflection.
I'm okay, yeah.
Great.
I move to direct staff to update the city council meeting agenda with the removal of the invocation period and approve the script for the moment of reflection that will replace the invocation period.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Just personally, it's a little wordy, but let's see how it works in, in practice. That's fine.
Start practicing for next meeting.
Madam City Clerk?
If I may.
Oh, yes, yes.
We do need direction on the rotating schedule or if the mayor is going to be reading the script.
You know they're going to make me do it.
Okay, just, just want to make sure we have that covered.
I'll, yes, we'll have the mayor do it, that's fine. If that's okay.
Okay.
I know.
I'll add that to my motion.
Excellent.
And that was the second's intent as well.
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Garzone.
Thank you.
Let's take the roll.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes, and that is a record for me.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
This is inclusive to all, it's equitable to all, and it provides the moment of pause and reflection we were looking for. So enthusiastic, yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Yes, thank you.
This is the time for council members to report on their council committee assignments. Let's see, did I have any? No, I did not have any council committee assignments. Anyone have any council committee assignments this last week? One, two? All right, okay, moving on. Council comments, reporting on attendance at conferences, regional meetings, or events. Anyone? Anyone?
I can go very quickly, Mr. Mayor. Thursday, March 30th, I had the privilege of stepping in your shoes and presenting a certificate of recognition to La Providencia Guild of Children's Hospital, Los Angeles thrift shop grand reopening ribbon cutting. It's a mouthful, but it was a really lovely event and I'm glad to see them reopened again. And then, of course, as we're all going to say today, we were there on the Warner Brothers lot to celebrate the 100th anniversary, and we all got these really neat pins to commemorate the day. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Um, this week, I had the lovely experience of attending our City of Burbank's nonprofit coalition. So I got to meet with the wonderful nonprofit providers, and it was very beneficial to hear what they're working on. So definitely invite my colleagues to, to reach out and do so as well. I also presented a certificate to MBA Studios Beauty Salon for their grand opening. The owner, Ani, is the sister of one of our wonderful staff members in Parks and Rec, Angela, and we're happy to see their family thrive and succeed in Burbank. And along with my colleagues, I also attended the Warner Brothers celebration. Happy birthday again.
Yes, happy birthday, attended with all of you today and took some lovely pictures. Thank you.
I just found some confetti from Warner Brothers.
All right, so on Wednesday, March 29th, I attended the National League of Cities webinar on city modernization processes. So they had several cities talked about modernization. And basically, I was like, yeah, Burbank's already done that, Burbank's already done that. So I was pretty happy to, to, to see that we're way ahead of a lot of the other cities there. So that was a good, good webinar. That same day, I also went to Assembly Friedman's virtual town hall, and I'm trying to remember what the topic of it was now. My gosh, it's been like a week, but I went to that and that was good. Yes, homelessness on women, that's right, thank you. The impacts of homelessness on women, she had a number of speakers at that town hall, that was great. Got good questions. Let's see, April 3rd, which is yesterday, I went to the Burbank Coordinating Council meeting, and the presentation there was from the Burbank Historical Society, so that was great. And I also renewed my membership, so if you aren't a member, make sure to renew your membership. And I also, that same day, met with representatives from the Burbank Tenants Union. So that was a good discussion as well. Thank you.
All right, great. I attended the Warner Brothers thing this morning, that was really great. I met with Senate Clarita Mayor Jason Gibbs. He is our representative for the La Casa program, the LA Community, LA County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency. I expressed to him stuff that we've been talking about here in Burbank, for one, a push for ownership instead of rentals.
This isn't a period, you're kind of on the point of advocating rather than just reporting.
Oh, I see.
You really can't go into the substance of advocacy.
Fair enough.